For the town of Pittsboro, North Carolina on Monday, August the 13th, 2018. We will begin our meeting with a moment's time. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your agendas before you. Is there a motion to accept or approve the agenda as proposed, or a motion to modify the general agenda?
Motion to approve as proposed.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the two items of the consent agenda?
It's a move.
Moved by Michael Fiocco.
Aye.
Seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That approves the amendments to the last meeting and sets a public hearing for August the 27th. The next matter on our agenda is citizens matters. There are six people signed up for public expression period, and the first person, let us remind you that we're allotting three minutes per person, and that we will conduct the public expression period for approximately 15 minutes. Elaine Kiesewetter, the first speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I see that the discussion of the Chatham Park stormwater element has been postponed again this time to August 27th. The memo that was part of the agenda packet says that staff and Chatham Park will be there on August 27th to present, and I'm hoping you'll invite Hydrostructure to also present theirs as really at the heart of what the stormwater review was about. Just wanted to say that. The next is a question. I'm wondering if Pittsboro, the town, if he responded to the NC Division of Water Resources letter on May 3rd, where they discussed with Pittsboro the need to follow up on its commitment to larger riparian buffers, greater stormwater management in the area where development would take place, a plan that goes to the Hall River. So it was a pretty strong letter. They expected a response. I'm wondering if Pittsboro has responded. If they have responded, I'm wondering if Division of Water Resources has responded back. So I think the public would like to know what's going on. That was May 3rd. It's been quite a while now since.
Yes, our attorney responded to the request within the stated time period, and may we make that on available online, or what?
Go on, give advice from our attorney.
Okay. When Paul Metzger gets here, we'll check in with him.
All right. And lastly, I just wanted to bring up the flooding that happened in Pittsboro on August 2nd, which I know you're all aware of, and probably saw videos that townspeople took of how very, you know, big an event that was. It's a very large rain event in a short amount of time, which can cause that kind of flooding. If you look at a watershed map of Roethen Creek, it is one of the most branched creeks in the Hall River watershed, and for the town to have been built there, I'm sure it was very advantageous that, you know, everybody had their own little stream that they could be close to. But it also means that, you know, tremendous amount of flooding takes place. This is happening all over the world. Much larger rain events in a short amount of time that overwhelm the storm management systems. And I just wanted to say for the record, you know, this is what we need to be thinking about when we look at the UDO and we look at Chatham Park's stormwater management, that we are not looking at the same situation that we've always been. This is the only world we're living in, in terms of climate change, and this is one of the aspects of climate change that's going to continue, I think, to be important here. You know, so, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine Kiesewetter. The next person signed up is Melanie York.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow commissioners. As a matter of order, I just want to inquire, there's a PowerPoint program that's to be presented tonight as part of the Powell Place neighborhood concerns regarding safety, and I'm willing to yield my time to make sure we cover all that well. May I do that? And if time allows, may I come at the end? Because I just want to be sure we get that covered well.
I don't have a PowerPoint. I don't have any drawing.
Yeah. May I do that? Yeah. Okay, and I'll come back if there's. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bonnie, did you better do right? Did you want to make the presentation?
Sure. That's just a little map that I looked up there. So I live in Powell Place on Millbrook Drive, and I just wanted to speak to a couple of issues that maybe are not as clear as they should be. Millbrook Drive is inadequate to handle the proposed Powell Place apartment complex. The developers' engineers stated that they, quote, "didn't create the problem," and were generously going to widen the road in front of the apartment complex to help the neighborhood. In fact, the developers did create the problem in making Millbrook Drive 22 feet wide instead of the minimum 28 feet the NC DOT requires in their original design. The town approved their flawed design but should not approve it again. This map is to just show you where that, where the bottleneck is on Millbrook. This large blue star on the right of the page is the eastern edge of the proposed site for the apartment development. That's Millbrook, starts out yellow there, and where it turns red is a narrow street between houses both on the north, which is to the bottom, and the south, which is to the top here. The orange line is an alley back behind those houses. Widening Millbrook in front of the apartments will do nothing to alleviate the problem of the bottleneck. The 500 new apartment vehicles will still have to pass through it. So widening it down here does not help this area that all cars from the entire neighborhood, including that new apartment development, are forced to exit through to get out of the neighborhood, which is on that end. One of the developers serves on our Powell Place HOA board and is well aware of the Millbrook Drive safety hazards because residents have complained about this at every HOA meeting. Nevertheless, he now wants to put hundreds of additional cars onto that already unsafe road. The developer's attorney at the last meeting stated, "There is no solution." There are at least two good viable solutions to the Millbrook Drive problem, but the developers don't like either one of those solutions. The first viable solution is that the developers be required to provide a new direct road into their apartment complex. The second feasible solution is that the developers can simply move the apartment complex from its currently proposed site to a slightly larger site that they also own in Powell Place. That site is well-served by two good existing roads. This would take the apartment traffic entirely off of Millbrook Drive and provide the apartment residents with quick access to major roads and amenities. The second issue is that people have suggested that parking be moved off of Millbrook. This is not a viable solution. Having cars parked along Millbrook is in itself a traffic calming device. Removing them would only increase the hazards, as frustrated drivers would simply speed up and create more dangers. Statistically, the majority of households in North Carolina have two cars. The next most likely number is three cars. Garages behind the houses on Millbrook are single-car garages. The developer's engineer investigated and measured, he found that residents have a hard time backing out of their garages, which only have four-foot driveways onto that alley you can see in orange. You can see the garages are right on that alley without running off into the road or hitting neighbors' garages. And he admitted that it is not possible to move cars from Millbrook onto that alley, and that there is no other feasible location to put them. You can't put parking further along the alley Barton Row, which is down this way on Millbrook, because this violates the neighborhood's southern transitional buffer. A Chatham Extension agent stated that grating the slope along that buffer and putting parking there would likely cause the buffer trees, some of which are over 100 feet tall, specifically two behind my house are over 100 feet tall, to fail, posing serious hazards to persons and garages and homes beneath them. So if you take parking off of Millbrook, 64 families will have nowhere for their families to park or their visitors and workmen to park. Eliminating parking on Millbrook is certain to negatively impact the value of our homes. Removing parking diminishes the usability and enjoyment of people's homes and lowers their property value. Parking in front of your house is a normal, reasonable, expected amenity of a neighborhood. It would be very unusual to not have it, and such a restriction would have to be noted on disclosure forms when prospective buyers considered purchasing a house. The town can face a possible lawsuit from the developers now, or face multiple potential lawsuits in the future resulting from the developers and town's failure to solve this problem before letting the developer forge ahead with a mammoth apartment complex where the infrastructure is clearly inadequate to support it. Isadora Duncan was invited to start a school for dance in Russia, but when she arrived, she was only given a bombed-out building stacked with rubble. Dismayed, she turned to the officer assigned to her and said, "How can I start a dance school here? It's not possible." He replied, "Ms. Duncan, there are no problems without solutions." Her school became the foundation of worldwide modern dance. I ask you, Mayor Perry and Town Commissioners, to take some more time and weigh all the possibilities and keep working with the developers to find a right and safe solution for Powell Place residents. We will all be better for it if you do. Thank you.
Thank you. So Judith has not only taken her three minutes, but Melanie York's three minutes too, but if we get to the end and we're still lacking some concept that Melanie thinks is important, we'll go ahead and take that one. Jeffrey York.
I reside at 90 Cobble Ridge Drive in the Powell Place complex. I've attended several of the meetings where different developments were discussed, in particularly the mosaic, and I just want to kind of applaud the developers of the mosaic for something I thought was a very thoughtful plan. Unfortunately, Powell Place also had a thoughtful master plan, but lots of things have changed. Certainly, there was at one point in time planned a village center, which did not happen. Another part of the plan was a school, which thankfully, we now have a lovely community park where that was supposed to be. There have been several different iterations of where the apartment complexes are to be. I only kind of bring that up because I keep hearing that because there is a master plan that somehow we have to follow the master plan and have these apartments built. As you can see, that master plan has changed quite frequently. But what I really want to discuss is something I don't think that has been brought up. We've talked a lot about the parking. We've talked a lot about the number of cars on the street, but we've not talked about anything having to do with pedestrians. So I don't know, I can't speculate how many of the new residents of the apartment buildings will have school-aged children, but I'm assuming that quite a few will. Currently, there are just a few children in the community that are picked up by a school bus, and they're picked up right there at the roundabout. I'm assuming that there'll be quite a few more children being picked up, but I've not heard anything at all discussed or seen in the plans whether the buses are going to come to that area, or they're actually going to come down into the complex more. But that's just something that I want to bring up and make sure everybody kind of thinks about before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bonnie Thompson.
I want to just piggyback on Judy Betterson for a moment. My husband and I actually live on that stretch of Millbrook called the bottleneck. And when we bought our house, it was not disclosed to us, but no, you can't park in front of your house. And none of my neighbors around me, when they bought their homes, was that disclosed to them either. So it really is true that this idea that if you just take the cars off Millbrook, problem solved, actually will devalue our homes. I mean, how do you sell a house to somebody and tell them, "Sorry, Thanksgiving, you can't have any company. You can't have the plumber, the electrician, park in front of your house." So I really want to stress that. There is nowhere else to park on that stretch of Millbrook. And I just, I think it's outrageous that that's even being suggested. The thing I wanted to address tonight hasn't been addressed, and it's a current problem, and it's one that I probably need to address to our police department, and that's the amount of speeding on Millbrook Drive. I sit on our front porch every morning, early, during the whole rush hour time, and the speed limit is 25 miles per hour in Powell Place, but there's only one sign stating that, and that's at the very entrance by cruisers. There are no other speed limit signs in Powell Place, so I will assume that drivers don't know what the speed limit is. But I will tell you, people speed, and I would like to see those speed limit machines, I don't know what they're called, devices. I'd like to see those put up, and I'd like to see those put up with a police presence. We have to slow people down on Millbrook Drive. And it's an ongoing problem. I don't know what else to do unless we do that. So I'm making that request tonight. If we start adding this many more cars and we don't address the speeding problem, it's really going to be more dangerous than it is now. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Whitner?
Wertheimer. Wertheimer. Hello, I'm Alice Wertheimer. I live at 58 Wickham Drive in Powell Place, and I want to thank my neighbors first, who are, they are very thoughtful and congenial way about which we're presenting this evening. And I want to thank you all for your very attentive response to our discussion tonight. There's a, as you know, there's a huge concern about this apartment complex, and I have, I echo what my neighbors have already said, but I also have two concerns that kind of come from those that I wanted to bring out this evening. One is my personal concern, and one is my professional concern. I'm with the Gilling's Global School of Public Health at UNC, and I have a lot of public health concerns about this complex being built in the development. I'm concerned about the stress on citizens in Pittsboro from the bottlenecking and difficult commute that this will make at rush hour. I think there's a real, a genuine concern for people having road rage, for just general anxiety and stress on commuters and drivers. I think there's a genuine concern for safety, as has been echoed. I think particularly, well, in emergencies, of course, there's going to be a concern about getting in and out of a very narrow roadway, one way in, one way out, with no other exit from the neighborhood. I'm assuming you are all very familiar already with Powell Place and that road, but the potential for a serious disaster and a public health, safety issue is real. And I'm concerned particularly for the health of mothers and children. I think it's been echoed about children and the school buses. I think for women going in and out with potentially needing to go to the hospital, having babies, there's all kinds of implications for citizens in general, and I'm concerned about women and children's health. I'm concerned about, about having, I'm wondering if there's been a call for a study by the Chatham Department of Health on the impact of this development, of, you know, enormous amount of additional people and traffic in a very contained space, and I'm wondering if that shouldn't be called for, and if it shouldn't be looked at by the State Division of Health and Human Services. So those are my professional concerns. My personal concerns, I've more or less since up until this very moment, up until driving down 15501 this evening and coming here, I have kept out of this discussion because I, I thought it was being very well represented already by my neighbors, and also because, as Jeff York mentioned, there's, I was an original owner also, an original purchaser of a home in Powell Place, and there's been a number of disappointments along the way, that things that were promised to us that didn't come to pass, but it all works out, and it all becomes workable, livable. It's a beautiful community with very nice, reasonable neighbors, and we all get along fine. But this really raises some concerns to me that I think would require another look at. So I appreciate that, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Melanie York, has there, have other speakers covered your concerns, or do you still have just a moment?
Just a tiny moment.
Thank you.
Melanie York, 90 Cobble Ridge Drive in the Powell Place neighborhood. One other of the citizenry that I want to mention, because we certainly have talked about children, and we've talked about health concerns, I appreciate everything that's been said, but we have a senior independent living community within our community. Those individuals, many of which lack mobility, are dependent on motorized wheelchairs. They utilize the sidewalk, and they utilize the access up and down Millbrook in order to get out and get fresh air. I've seen many of them on occasions walking their dogs with their wheelchairs. Many of them participate in Piedmont Senior Care, Piedmont Health Senior Care, and so therefore they go to daycare during the day, and the van must come and pick them up. Many of them also utilize transit, and so they utilize that transportation. Some of them do not drive, and so they need help getting to the grocery store. These individuals are dependent and must be looked at even more carefully in terms of their safety. Obviously, because of their health problems, an ambulance may need to come with more frequency. A fire truck may need to come more frequently. So I'm sensitive to their needs, and that's from a very personal place, as my mother lived and passed away in that living facility. So please consider that, along with all the other safety concerns. That is our primary word here, safety, again. Thank you so much.
Before moving on to our next agenda item, I would like to say that in the interim, since we, at the last meeting, postponed the decision on the Powell Place apartments, in the interim, several of us have been involved in discussions outside of the public meetings independently to try to seek a solution to the problems that you all have put forward. So we're working on it. Our next section is manager updates, and it's an opportunity for us to learn about what's upcoming in the town. I'd call on our town manager, Brian Grusbeck, to begin this update period.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be going through this briefly. If you have any questions, please let me know, and we can certainly, if you're concerned, talk about these a little bit more depth later in the meeting, or if someone would like to meet with us. You'll recall at the last meeting on July 20, 2020, just before the clock struck midnight, we had a presentation from Hobbs Architects on the new Town Hall project. I think there were a couple items of consensus that we took from that. Couple three. One is parking, and we need to maximize the parking. Second was, we want to see more administrative activities versus, you know, things that are maybe noise and programming type of activities. We really seem to be picking on Zoom for some reason. I don't know if that's just that type of thing where it causes a lot of commotion or ruckus, as one of my old teachers might have said. The last would be demolition schedule and kind of a brief overview of how we go about that. We'll be releasing a demolition overview, overview, excuse me, demolition RFQ for this project shortly, with the intention of taking down the existing building that's on site. That work would, in a nutshell, be scheduled to begin sometime after the first of this calendar year. Since then, Hobbs, Hobbs and the county staff met with Chatham County Administrative Staff, kind of talked about how Chatham County would contemplate staffing the building and sharing space with the town. You'll recall that in the programming, building progress discussion at that point, we were kind of, we kind of received some really high estimates of the number of county personnel that their department had been contemplating at that point in time. We're trying to find a way if maybe some of that could be held back in terms of how the health department was concerned. And then also too, again, not to pick on Zoom, but maybe find another place for a recreation program for this building. There was some discussion too at that meeting on how we can go about allowing elections personnel to exist in the space, but controlling the election day voting and how we can go about that. So there's a little bit more work to be done in that, but I think we made some progress. Following that, and there was no reason for the sequence really, other than just things that just sort of happened, Hobbs Architects and myself met with Pittsboro Rotary, just as a sort of a public overview, to get some small input. In all honesty, it was my turn to provide programming to the Rotary for that day, so I thought that was a good opportunity to take that up. We see actually some big questions we haven't heard before, and one of them is with the design of the new Town Hall meeting requirements and of the town type requirements, and there, you recall Mr. Hobbs talking with the planning staff, or talking about how he talked with the planning staff, about ways that we can keep that under 50-foot requirement. So we're going to try to maintain that, and you saw some of the preliminary sketches of how that gap. And second, what about cases of disaster, have we given any thought to how that would go about? And then finally, will there be enough community meeting space? And this is kind of the first time that I've heard that from someone else. I think this comment was directed more or less on, you'll recall, this is by no means the final footprint up there, but... by no means the final footprint up there, but you recall this area on the first floor, or I should say the lower floor, yeah, first floor, on the South Bruce Street side being the area where the council, where the board chambers would be. And I think the idea the council's going into it at this point in time is that those board chambers would have, for example, fixed seating and more of a, more of an area that is wired, required and geared for sound and presentation, and may not have, say, for flexible meeting space, at least in this, in this area right here. So I think we kind of, the takeaway from that, that brief discussion was that there is some, is at least in this case, some feedback from the community on, yeah, the community would like to see some lunch space for folks to meet. And I think we have means to accommodate that with smaller flex space in the building, smaller flex space that is not necessarily designed at this point in time to be in board chambers. So again, we'll have Hobbs come back and talk a little bit more about this stuff more in the future. There's a, as you recall, a proposed concrete plant that is supposed to be going in adjacent orders, contemplated for adjacent to the Pottersville Village. And you can see this, this, if you look at the slide, shows, shows where Pottersville Village is, you can see where the proposed concrete plant will be. And this is just a map that depicts some of their engineering, and this is by no means official discussion on this issue, just by way of an update. The engineer that had met with staff indicated that they are interested in extending, or asking the town to extend utilities, water and sewer to that site. This happens to be kind of a, I'd say crude, but that's not really the real, like, use for a preliminary effect of how water would come into the site. And then there would be also a sewer that could be extended as well. As you can see in the slide, the concrete plant was reportedly unable to negotiate a easement with Pottersville Village, and they are requesting, contemplating requests for groundwater and sewer. The thing that staff, I think, needs to bring up to you possibly in an upcoming discussion is a policy question, expanding or extending utilities without annexation, because this property does affect why the site has boundaries. And so it's my understanding that staff has, has advised the contractor, the representatives of, of the concrete plant that this could be an issue. And so I think certainly your feedback on this is going to be solicited in the upcoming meetings. So again, this is by way of an update, not necessarily looking to try and solve any issues in the future. Also too, I think as earlier mentioned tonight, on August 2nd, we received a reported four and a half inches of rainfall. I was told, at the wastewater plant, I was told that afternoon over approximately 90 minutes, we received more rainfall on the 3rd. You have, you have here just sort of a really quick depiction, graphical depiction of rainfall over the, about a 14-month period. And you can see in most, in most months, the total, the total rainfall that we received on August 2nd beats most months during that period. And that's, this is only recorded over one day, and we obviously received more on that than the days since then. So it'll be interesting to see how this, this month affects our previous one. So the, I guess the point of this is, is that when you receive that much rainfall over a short amount of time, a fraction of time, and receive it over another month, it's, I think, going to really cause a lot of stress on our citizens who start to make the public progress. And this is even after we follow a regular plan of maintenance. Having said that, we've gone into a little bit more detail on taking a look at those storm drains and culverts and bringing in some outside equipment to kind of bring a little bit more debris out of those structures so that if we are in this type of storm in the near future, we're not faced with some flooding, frankly, we had never faced before as a result of that event rainfall. So we'll keep you posted on how that goes. If you see, if you see our staff out alongside of the road, maybe coating some areas off, that's what they're doing, particularly around the town. And then not, not, we don't have to go into too, too much detail on, on some of the other plan work that we have going. With regards to the bicycle, bicycle and pedestrian plan that we received a grant for back in March, this is under DOT's actual, actual administering process, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, according to Jeff, who will be looking to appoint a committee to help with the bike and pedestrian plan here in the near future. So we'll have that, we'll be taking your grade on that, asking you some input. The not indicated on here would be maybe just a pretty common about the lighting project on Pittsboro and, and as you recall from previous updates, that based on some additional valuable input that we received from the board and having taken that back to DOT. DOT is in a design process, but we have the scope of the project and the timeline back about six months. So I think at the end of the day, they're looking at June 20, 20, start of construction period. But before that happens, we'll have some public feedback with DOT on that before construction issues start to be something like those dates. And so with that, I guess, upcoming meetings, the one thing I would point out is on September 10th, we are looking to have, assuming everything else is submitted properly, the staff is ready to go with that, and we'll be able to give those presentations and studies. I can probably keep going, let's stop right there. Like I said, we have to have a good feedback on that.
Great. Thank you, Brian Gruzbeck. This is also a time when I speak about those meetings that I've attended and that other members of the board have attended. About two weeks ago, I was at the OAKA, and I had the pleasure of riding in a helicopter, which managed to make the front page and Facebook. So it was a fascinating view of Pittsburgh from above. The town is just absolutely beautiful from up there. And, and one of the greatest surprises was seeing the 3M Corporation facility south of town, although it's outside of our jurisdiction technically, we supply reuse water to that facility, which supplies rock, which is used in shingle making. And I had no idea that the, that the hole was that vast or that the area was as, they've done a beautiful job of buffering it, they've done a beautiful job of, of taking a large site and making an incredible useful industrial area there. I, as I alluded to when the Powell Place folks were speaking, I have attended a couple of meetings regarding the Powell Place parking situation and safety issues. I had a fascinating conference call on the 31st of July regarding the 1-4 dioxane in the upper Cape Fear, upper Haw area, which has, a lot of these initiatives have been led by a water quality person down in Fayetteville on staff named Mick Nolan. And Mick has just really been outstanding in his approach to taking a look at the 1-4 dioxane. And one of the biggest problems that we have right now is the Ashborough wastewater treatment plant is reporting very, very high levels of 1-4 dioxane. One of the good things that is happening out of all of this is that although we're still feeling somewhat behind in the publicity on this, and Gen X seems to get the major share of the publicity, there, there are meetings that are beginning now with water quality people all the way up to Haw to Reddsville, and, and it is, there's some, some slow progress in the border areas, but there's some fairly significant progress in the Greensboro area. This past week, I also attended transportation meetings in Sanford, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as time goes forward. Any commissioners' reports on Triangle J or the Pittsburgh Business Association Climate Change or Main Street?
The Triangle J actually is reset for the summer. We will return in August. However, there is some information I want to pass out to the commissioners regarding economic, it's called the Economic Summit that Triangle J will be hosting, and it will be across the region, it will be in Sanford, North Carolina, at the Dennisburg Center. So I'm going to pass this out to everyone, and if they would like to attend, put your feet, and you can just register. It will be very, it, this will be the second regional conference that has been held. The first was very good, and we anticipate that the second will be just as good.
Any other reports?
I'm happy to report that we've heard from Kim Lee Horn, the designers of the circle improvements, and the NCDOT that the project's fully funded, and that it will be moving forward, and the schedule is that they hope to have all the utility relocation work, burying overhead power lines and those, that sort of activity by the end of this year, and that they hope to begin construction in earnest in February 2019 and be complete in September, October. And we're urging them to be complete before the holiday shopping season. So I know a lot of our retailers rely on that, and I'm a little bit familiar with that myself. So I was excited to get the news, and so looking forward to this.
Okay. Anything further, current questions? Now, we'll proceed then to old business. The first item of old business is the subdivision review for Mosaic, Section A, and will be led by Victoria Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. We have subdivision 2017-01. Chatham Park investors have submitted a preliminary plat for approval. The proposal is to subdivide 44 acres into 20 lots designed for mixed use. The subdivision will utilize private drives in place of public streets with access points off of both Resit Run and 15501. The property is currently located in the ETJ, and the developer is applying for annexation. The subdivision ordinance allows PDDs to depart from the town's design standards for streets and lots if the design meets the general intent of the ordinance. And in the case of this plat, the following standards have not been met. All lots must front a public street. Sidewalks must be provided on both sides of the street, and sidewalks serving mixed use in commercial areas shall be eight feet in width unless accepted by commissioners. The planning board reviewed this plat at their meeting on July 9th, and in a vote of six to zero, recommended approval of the plat. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate departments, and staff is also recommending approval.
Thank you. Do you have questions of Victoria Bailey?
Victoria, could you go back one slide? Okay, well, it makes sense that lots won't front a public street with private streets, which I think is wholly adequate. Yeah, I don't see the need for sidewalks on both sides either, based on the private nature and I think the urban nature of the concept.
Victoria, what is the advantage of the, or perhaps the developer needs to address is of the private driveway access rather than public?
I'll let the developer take care of that one.
Thank you.
I'm Kirk Bradley, 603 Carthage Street, Sanford, North Carolina, and I'm one of the partners, I'm John Dugoe, that'll be developing this project. I also have Mark Ashness with Sea Group here help me, and he has done this exhibit, so I'm going to let him explain. But there is some flexibility allowed to us by making these private streets versus public streets in order to achieve the type of mixed use and pedestrian-friendly nature that we want to accomplish, and so Mark will specifically address this.
Sure, glad to. Evening, board members, staff, Mark Ashness, Sea Group, 301 Glenwood Avenue, Suite 220, Raleigh, North Carolina. I think the real advantage is, in some instances, we'll actually close the streets down for certain events, and we'll also use moonlighting types of fixtures and things like that that may go over various areas. So it just allows a lot more flexibility. A typical public street is more linear feeling, and I think if you remember when we presented sort of the macro view back in June to you, we showed you some of the various techniques that are used, like at North Hills in Raleigh, where in some instances you have sort of a broader plaza, you change your materials types as you go across the road. So it's more pedestrian-friendly. I also think similar to a shopping center, there's a CAM that all of the owners of the land pay to maintain those areas, and no offense to the town, I think this is typical of any municipality, there's probably a higher level of care by those retailers because it's very important for everything to be spick and span, you know, in front of their facilities versus a municipality that's responsible for miles and miles of roads. So those are the main points of having private roads.
I had one other question, and that was that on the stormwater plan, Lot 1 is the recipient of a utility easement. I wasn't sure if our buffers are undisturbed buffers or whether they allow for drainage and utilities to pass through them.
So Lot 1 is essentially a lot that is sort of commonly owned by the, there's the field look, there isn't really anything other than the event lawn is inside of Lot 1, but it's, it does have features like a larger water quality pond, it has some greenway trails, and basically there are some locations that we're impacting the outer 50 feet of the buffer. As you know, Chatham Park has wider buffers than the towns, but all of those are compliant with what the town stormwater requirements allow for. So there's some instances when we're bringing the greenway trail in or we're crossing, for instance, the pump station that serves this particular project is on the other side of the creek that sort of bounds the eastern edge of the property, and so we're crossing that creek with the utility, and that's permitted by right. But none of the proposed impacts that we have are above and beyond what the town would allow in the, in their current stormwater buffer regulations.
But I don't believe I heard the answer to my question, which was, is it an undisturbed buffer?
The entire area is not undisturbed, but all of the areas that are required to be undisturbed are in that vein. So all of Lot 1, there are disturbances in Lot 1. So Lot 1 is, comprises buffer and other open space areas, and so we are not disturbing anywhere in the inner 50-foot buffer or in the outer 50-foot buffer except provided anywhere in the inner 50-foot buffer or in the outer 50-foot buffer, except provided for what your ordinance is currently allowing. So there is some impacts, yes.
And are all of those utility crossings?
They're either utility, greenway, or stormwater-related aspects. That's correct.
Okay.
Got a couple of questions. Mark, this one's probably for you. Looking at the phasing plan, I'm seeing that the majority of the project is to occur in Phase 1, and yet the large stormwater pond is shown in Phase 2, and I think the vast majority of the drainage is going to that pond.
Correct.
I'm assuming it'll be developed with Phase 1.
It will, it'll act as a, it'll be a very large sediment basin, actually, in Phase 1. So, and you know this from your background, typically what we've experienced is, is that particularly with the Chatham County regulations, the stormwater structures are wider, larger than the permanent stormwater needs are. So that basin will be larger than the permanent pond during the construction phase. And so Phase 1, some of the buildings will be complete, and even some of the buildings in Phase 2 will be complete before that structure is transformed into a water quality structure. Now, we will also have onsite, more localized stormwater features that'll be associated with each individual lot in construction. And just as a point, tonight is really the macro picture. You will actually see individual lots come in, in the future, with specific site plans that will show additional stormwater measures. But your point is correct, that will serve as a sediment basin for quite some time, and that's, that's pretty typical of every construction project we work on. The transformation of that to a permanent water quality structure usually occurs several years later.
So it will be constructed, it just will be during Phase 1, it'll just be converted from a temporary device to a permanent device in Phase 2, and at the end, there will still be a couple of buildings in Phase 3 that get constructed that don't need it as an erosion control.
Correct. That's right. So it'll slowly transform into a water quality structure, but it will, it will actually in the initial phase be a sediment control measure.
Okay, yep. Technical, you know, I see you're proposing on-street parking, you know, and I think that does reflect the idea that it will perform something like a shopping center, and I think that's to be expected. But there are, the detail for, I think, the on-street parking has a five-foot sidewalk just adjacent to the curb, and I, and if it's on a roadway, I think these people or folks are gonna wanna pull up to make sure they're out of the way, and obviously I think we're gonna lose the sidewalk without overhang. Highly tactical and...
No, no, those are good points.
I just get concerned, we're probably not gonna have wheel stops out there.
Well, we would in a situation that you're just describing. So for instance, with the sidewalk on this side of this parking bay, and these are, I call them die-in parking, I don't agree parking, we're gonna have wheel stops there to keep, to protect that sidewalk. When you look at some of the other areas where we have sort of the 60-degree parking right here, you know, those, those areas are typically 15 to 18 feet in width there. So it's, it's, you know, this really functions more as a parking field, as does this, and you can see in this instance, the park, the pedestrian pathways are running with the parking spaces, so there's less of an issue there. But, and there's a few locations, I think it's right here, right here, we have to look at some wheel stops.
Yeah. The other question I've got is I saw that we're addressing the open space and the tree coverage, but I didn't see any reference to any recreation. Is it, how, how is it addressing the recreation demands?
The recreation demands will be met through the overall Chatham Park overlay, not, not specific to this, this location. We will have open space acreage, but the recreational demands will be met elsewhere other than the, the private facilities, like there'll be a fitness facility here, but not the true public. It'll be dealt with in the macro.
Does the greenway?
Yeah, the greenway will meet that criteria, we've made it wide enough.
Yeah, and some is on-site.
Some is on-site.
So we had to do some off-site in order to meet the standards, and so we're working with Chatham Park to provide that.
Other questions from the board?
Does, does the courtyard area qualify as rec space?
You have to dedicate that to the town for it to qualify as recreation, and we wanted to allow flexibility in the future for that space. Not really necessarily take it away as green space, but if we wanted to add a structure on there, something like that, there may be some limitations, so that's why we're...
So you're gonna retain it?
Yes, correct.
Got it.
Yeah, I think there were some exceptions that were noted by Victoria, and one is all lots must front on a public street, and we've covered that. Michael's already kind of spoke to the sidewalks, and then I guess one of the other issues, and we included a letter from the Carolina Living facility just to the east of us, we would like to see, this particular extension here has some real physical constraints because of the lack of shoulder clear on Russet Run, and so we'd either like for that to be admitted, delayed, or I think the town has other options too, in terms of how that can be treated. Carolina Living has indicated in their letter that they really prefer for us not to extend that. The way we have it laid out right now is we're improving the sidewalk on Russet Run, and then we're tapering it off to the greenway trail that runs around the perimeter, so we're not, we're not extending a street sidewalk to nowhere, it will feel like it flows around the site in that location, and we'd, are just simply requesting that that, that additional aspect of continuing that on Russet Run either be omitted or delayed.
In tandem with Carolina Living's, that it doesn't encourage any traffic past our project.
I was not familiar with the idea of trails along the public right-of-way of, or ride along 15501, but right before the meeting, Michael and I were talking, and apparently it is becoming a greater amenity these days. Do you wanna speak to that, Mark?
No, I agree. I mean, obviously people now are getting out and cycling, in Raleigh they're using scooters, you may have that problem in the future, but people are definitely getting out and not using their vehicles to get around, so, you know, having an eight-to-10-foot greenway trail that's working along these corridors, we know that y'all are planning to extend the system back into town, so heading south, and then, you know, ultimately, it makes sense that that connectivity will go north as, as development occurs north of this project, and then we've got good linkages to the west, to the, to high school access roads as well. So I think you're gonna see more people getting out there and utilizing these systems as they continue to get extended.
Are you aware if the high school is going to put sidewalk on that side?
My understanding is there'll be a cross, there'll be a protected crossing at both locations, at the Russet Run location, at the new road location. I can't speak to the plans on the high school site, but I do know there'll be crossings at both those locations.
Thank you. Further questions, or is there a motion?
I'm curious how we would go about delaying the sidewalk connection. I think that's an appropriate action to take, given the concerns of the...
That's Patrick Greshaw, he's had some discussions with City Attorney Messick, and maybe we can specifically address that.
Commissioners, Mayor, I have discussed this issue with the town attorney, and in a plan development, the board has complete discretion over the timing of the transportation and pedestrian connections. The ordinance says that it can be determined as site plans and subdivision plans are approved, so there's no specific timing requirement on that. Even if this were a regular subdivision, under your, your regular subdivision regulations, where the circumstances call for it, you have authority not to require sidewalks on both sides of the street, and that's all we're talking about here. This would be a sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything, it would connect to an adjacent property owner that has safety concerns because of their use of their property at the Carolina Living and Learning Center, they would rather not have a connection. And there's no plans for imminent development of Chatham Park further to the east of this. So I think you have ample discretion under your ordinance that it's just not to require this sidewalk at this time, and then if it becomes necessary in the future, address it with subsequent subdivisions and site plans.
Thank you. Further questions?
I'd like a motion to approve with the caveat that we delay this connection to some date in the future.
Motion by Michael Fioco.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda would be the proposed annexation. There is a ordinance adoption in your package for this mosaic area, and Victoria Bayless again will lead us in discussion.
This is annexation 2017-08. Chatham Park investors have submitted a petition to annex parcel 68503, Zone PDD, and parcel 7219, Zone C2, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Russet Run and Highway US 5501. This 44.1 acre area encompasses the 20-lot subdivision in just whenever, and a public hearing was held on November 27, 2017. No citizens chose to speak, and their recommendation is to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so are there questions for Victoria? The ordinance to extend corporate limits is attached in your package, and will be filled in with the dates for advertising in the Chatham record. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Michael Fioco.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Parks and Recreation Plan update. Paul Horn will be presenting along with the master plan author.
Actually, I'll just be introducing David Barf with Barf Associates in Gangesville, Florida. We did present this presentation to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board last Wednesday. They did not have a quorum, but they were favorably impressed with the product, had several very good questions which were addressed, and without further ado, I give you further part.
Thank you all very much. I've enjoyed my time here. I've had great barbecue, I've paddled the Hall River, I went down my mother's childhood home outside of Greensboro, spent time near downtown, and so this whole presentation really comes to you with a lot of affection from the town for this charming place you have, and a shared desire, I think, with you and your residents in how do you maintain the quality and the charm of this community that you live in, it's a special place. Let me make sure I operate everything. So a couple of quotes are up here, can you hear me if I stand here? A couple of quotes up here, so Frederick Law Homestead's were the father of planning and landscape architecture professions, and I just love this quote because it talks about that, we talked about a Parks and Recreation master plan, but the tendency is to think it's just about parks and recreation, and it's not. It is about quality of life, and it's about economic development, it's about a lot of things we've talked about. It's about opportunities for storm drains, it's about opportunities for flood control, it's economic development and social issues. Someone talked about stress and stress relief. So there's something very different about parks, and there is this great correlation between places that you live, or places that you visit that have great park systems, and the quality of life that the people who live there experience. So for us, we talk about through the park's window, it's just a phrase we've used for years, through the park's window, we try to address really, really broad quality of life issues, but also address specifics relating to parks and recreation. So I keep changing this slide, depending on how I'm feeling at the time, but I think there's three big ideas, there was three big ideas. But on one hand, you've hired us to address how do we meet existing and future parks and recreation needs, and you are in this, and I applaud you for doing this, by the way. Here you are, you're a 4,000-person town that's going to become a 60, 70,000-person city in the coming picture-time horizon, I've heard different times, 30 years, 40 years, I don't know what time it is. And it's, and I can't tell you how many communities I've worked in who are 60, 70, 80,000-person communities who wish they had done this kind of planning back when they were 4,000 folks. So I applaud you for doing this, this is just really good stuff, that you're thinking ahead of how do you meet the needs of future populations. So on one hand, it is a Parks and Recreation plan. The second part, on a higher level, is we think of it as part of an integrated public realm, so we think of not just parks, but trails, streets, stormwater facilities, environmental lands, recreation centers. You'll see in the needs assessment, for those of you who remember back in March, we talked about, your recre, your residents talked about the need for recreation centers, they talked about the need for aquatic centers, things that you may not think of as a 4,000 person community, people in 70,000 person communities definitely are thinking about those kinds of things. So it's this broader public realm. And then the third one's the trickiest. It's easy for us to come up with this longer list of all these things you should spend money on, and then you get to the operations and maintenance, and so the question is, what do we do now in 2018 that could start to implement your plan, so that we have a long-range strategy for implementation over time as you grow. So I think there's three big ideas there that I'll talk about. So we start by saying, what do we mean by an interconnected realm? This is a cartoon that we use that says, you can think of all your sites and streets as separate, or you can think of them as a unified system. If you think about everything that you're going to control and manage over the next 30 or 40 years, and you aggregate all these things you see up there, streets, sidewalks, trails, greenways, environmental lands, parking lots with sites, storage sites, et cetera, et cetera, you will find that you aggregate about 40 to 50% of the land mass of what will be Pittsburgh 30 years from now. I mean, it probably is about that now. But streets alone, streets, trails, sidewalks, you know, 30%, if you take all your right-of-ways, 30% of your land mass, you add all these other things, you have the 40 or 50%. So if you view it as an integrated system, as opposed to we're gonna deal with this site, and this site, and this site, then you start to see there's real opportunities for you to address issues like transportation, and stormwater, and flooding through this system that comprises 50% of your community. So that's one big idea we'd like to keep in mind. From the very beginning, when we first met your staff and we talked about this, we started talking about this one Pittsburgh idea, and that's not a new term, but we thought it fit here, because we've worked in other communities where there was a small community that annexed or grew into a much larger community, and the trouble is, in the old days, if we extended our grids out, right, if you kept going, if you were in New York City, and you extend your grids, and you have this urban framework, it'd be easier. But what we have is you have a very traditional grid, traditional network, and then you're connecting to this suburban-style development, and so this, these connections become absolutely critical. And so we talk about framework for growth, which means not only making sure that we restore or connect some limits and links of our network inside your current corporate limits, but in every action that you do, you look to make sure that there's multiple ways to connect to new development as well. And some of the speakers who are already up here talked about this incredible increase in popularity of bikeways, trails, and so even though streets may not, not all connect, it's really, really critical that this park plan talk about your connectivity of streets and bikeways and trails as well. So this idea of that you create this framework for growth is a really important idea. And then this is one, it's a lot of words, but I showed you last time in that, in the research I did, my doctoral research in University of Florida, was about this idea of high-performance public spaces. The idea that every single public space that you build, whether it's a trail, a greenway, a sidewalk, a park, helps create a more sustainable living community. So the idea of high performance is that we're asking... So the idea of high performance is that we're asking each of our public improvements to generate multiple benefits, not just single purpose benefits. So a park can generate recreation benefits, but it can also generate health and social benefits, it can generate stormwater benefits, it can generate economic development benefits. So this whole idea of high performance, that we want to be a world sustainable, sustainable, resilient, and one way to do that is that we create a system of these high performance public spaces. So those are just some philosophical ideas, just to give you a background of our kind of mental approach to Parks and Recreation System Plan. So getting more specific, the processes you hired us to do went through these four phases, statistics analysis, needs assessment, long range vision, implementation plan. When we presented to you back in March, we presented the findings from steps one and two. So tonight, we're talking about our thoughts from steps three and four. So I'll start with a quick overview of one and two, just to remind you when we'll move into three and four. So here's our presentation outline, quick overview of needs and priorities. And we want to spend the bulk of our time just talking about ideas for this long range vision, talk about funding strategy, and then see what other questions that you have. Is that okay? And then stop any time you have a question, I'd be glad to stop and answer. So recap of the needs and priorities assessment, all you need to know from that chart is we used a mixed methods triangulated approach to figure out needs. So we talked about mixed methods, you know, we use primary data such as meeting with people, surveys, et cetera. We use quantitative techniques, we use qualitative techniques. The triangulation comes from that we try to look at the data we collect in different perspectives to see if it starts telling us the same thing. So if you look at, these are the needs assessment techniques, level service analysis, benchmarking, we just statistically represented a survey, we had advisory board meetings, online engagement, public workshops, stakeholder interviews, and we decided values and trends analysis. So these are all different ways of looking at needs and priorities to see what we found out. Paul also did this online engagement, right, when we were getting involved, just getting a lot of qualitative data from folks about what they're really interested in. So this is a very low tech chart. What this says, if you look at the top line, those are the major different techniques we use, statistically representative survey, level service analysis, et cetera. If you look at the, I don't know what you can read this pretty well from your seat, if you look at the column on the left, those were the high priorities that came out of the mail telephone survey. So number one priority, walking and biking trails, goes back to the gentleman who spoke before about the popularity of trails and bikeways, this is what we're finding in needs assessments across the country. So look at how many of these deal with connectivity, walking and biking trails, sidewalks, street trees, and benches. Here, one more. Then you have the idea of restrooms in existing parks, so fixing up existing parks, and then you have three of them that deal with swimming, indoor aquatics, outdoor swimming, water parks, and indoor lap lanes, and you have this indoor running, walking track. So if I boil this down, it only comes down to three things, connectivity, improvements for existing parks, and in essence, adult, for most part, adult wellness and fitness. And that's where it comes in. The dots along the chart show how many times the knee that came out of the statistically valid survey also showed up in the other techniques. So you can look at number one, walking and biking trails, you can see that was consistent across the top. You can look at number two, almost consistent. You can look at number five, a lot of interest in swimming. So you can see that when we triangulate, we're looking to see if the same thing we're hearing one technique, it also tells us from other techniques that it is a top priority. That's a real summary of the needs and priorities assessment. Some of the images that came out statistically valid survey is you can see, for example, the top priorities that we already talked about, so walking, biking trails, sidewalks, street trees, and benches. So that first, oh, thank you, whoever did that. The first six or seven were concerned high priority, and then you go medium priority and lower priority. Doesn't mean that they say that not everything's important to some of your residents, but the ones at the top are the ones that are most important to the largest number of residents with the highest unmet need. And you look at programming, so community events, different types of fitness and wellness programs, water fitness, so you can see a theme here, canoe and kayak, paddleboard programs, adult continuing education. So, you know, people are, what we characterize it in a lot of communities is people are constantly looking for these places to come together, to socialize, to meet their neighbors, to get out of their own home and get out into the community. Just some interesting things, we ask people about travel distances, and it's pretty consistent. People want to walk to neighborhood parks fairly close to their home, and you'll see that when we talk about the vision. They're willing to drive, you know, shorter distances for some spaces, like they're willing to drive, say, a mile or more, maybe a civic space, three miles or so to community parks, willing to drive further for large natural areas, large regional parks. They'd like a greenway or trail, you know, close to their home, half mile or a mile from their homes. They'd like to be able to get on their bike, walk from their neighborhood onto a trail system, and then connect out to the larger community. Those are some of the findings. There is some willingness to pay more taxes, but it's a fairly, you know, the sweet spot's around eight or nine dollars for most of the people who responded. It's not a huge amount of money, but per month, so you're talking about a hundred dollars a year. And then support for actions, you know, the number one support was acquiring land, preserve natural areas. There's a lot of concern, which I'm assuming you hear all the time, is, it was interesting, Mary, you talked about going up in a helicopter. And the view you saw, I think, is what people fear losing. You know, there's a real concern about how do we maintain this beautiful scenery, the charm of the community, and so much has to do with tree canopy and natural habitat. So a lot of support for acquiring land, preserve natural areas, developing parks and recreation facilities, developing the greenway, greenway and trails. Willingness to support using tax dollars, the highest ranking theme was for greenways and trails. Connectivity next down was developing aquatic facilities. Some highlights there. Paul had these wordles, is that the right word? These word cartoon stuff. I just like them, you know, it's not a quantitative technique, right, it's not exactly scientific. It sure does tell you what people care about. And so if you take all the online engagement, and you look at the things that people say are really important to them, it just gives you a great sense of what's important to your residents. I always thought these should be on the wall all your public building, just to say as a reminder, here's what we say in Pittsburgh, really, really, really important values to us, things we want to protect and preserve. Okay, any questions about the needs assessment? That was just a snapshot. We submitted the report to you before. Are we okay so far? Okay. So here's the interesting part, when you go from a needs assessment to a long range vision. I like to use the phrase, what's the appropriate response? What's the appropriate response for you to take based on the needs and priorities of your residents? And the answer is, there is no single right or wrong response. You have to decide what that response is for yourself. The last published quote standards for parks and recreation was in 1996, and in that document they said, there are no standards for parks and recreation. We have to decide. It's not like the Green Book for transportation, and it's not like any of the other elements in infrastructure. Parks and recreation really is based on the value of the community, benchmarking, and affordability, it's where you think your values are and where you want to place your tax dollars. So we start with the idea that there's no absolute standards, which can also be very freeing, because we don't have to comply with anything. But there's often an awful lot of great best practices and guiding principles and benchmarks out there. So we have everything, the National Recreation and Parks Association puts out its agency performance report, which allows you to benchmark yourself against other communities, and Paul had them do one for Pittsburgh. You have work like Peter Harnix from the Trust for Public Land that talks about the elements of the excellent city park system. I have my own research in high performance public spaces, articles and papers I've written in American Planning Association on local service standards. We have all kinds of policy guides for healthy community. So there's no shortage of guiding principles, benchmarks, best practices to start. So when you read our, the vision chapter, you'll see that we do some citations of different sources, just to talk about where some of these ideas come from. So key attributes of the vision that we created for Pittsburgh has some of these criteria, that we want equitable access, right? People want to be able to walk, no matter where they live in Pittsburgh, over time, they should be able to get to their local park. They want equitable access to larger facilities. There's an interest in central gathering spaces. This theme you're going to hear over and over and over again, interconnected streets and trail network, integrated stormwater treatment facilities. It's very interesting to hear the discussion about the recent flooding. So you have an opportunity moving forward as you plan for locations of new parks, as you plan for environmental lands protection and conservation. So also look, where are you having flooding problems, where are you having stormwater problems? And we go back to that idea of multiple benefits, right? So if you're going to acquire a piece of land, acquire a piece of land where you can get recreation benefits, health benefits, transportation benefits, stormwater benefits, flood benefits, et cetera. There's some balancing act to do, it's kind of hard to enjoy recreation in a park that's under two feet of water. So you have to figure out, right, where the balance is, but a portion of the park. One of the great success stories, Paul and I talked about this, is the historic Fourth Ward Park in Atlanta, anybody familiar? Was a major, major flooding problem in industrial part of town. That park, which is now a signature, similar park, has spawned, and I don't feel I'm exaggerating, billions of dollars of real estate investment in the areas surrounding it. It is now, what I've been told, highest per square foot rental rate in all of Atlanta because of this new development now that's just fronting on this gorgeous park, which is actually a stormwater facility. So there's great examples around the country of where folks have combined these ideas of urban redevelopment, parks, open space, stormwater, et cetera. So we have protected natural areas, we have that concept of high performance public spaces, maintaining your current level of service. Right now, you have like 18 acres of developable parkland for 1,000 population, that's an enviable level of service. And so we said in one of our key attributes, we'd like to see you continue that. There's no reason as you develop, you can't maintain that level of service, there's no reason you need to drop down below that. Interest in fitness programs and partnerships. So those are some of the key attributes. The proposed improvements for the vision are broken into these eight categories. When we were here in March, we had a visioning workshop, and it was broken into these two-hour segments, hour and a half, two-hour segments, of different topics, pretty much following those. And so we had, we just about 100, 100 or so folks come participate, with different folks participating in different sessions, to try to help us develop what the vision is for each of those components. So I'm going to take you through each of those eight subject areas, and just talk about briefly what the vision is for each one. Okay, go. Have I lost anybody? All right. So we start with the one we've been talking about now all evening, which is this whole idea of bicycle pedestrian connectivity. This is one of Paul's favorite diagrams, and a lot of people like it. It talks about that the majority of folks are interested in cyclists that are concerned, you know, they don't want to be on the street. There's a small percentage here, they call them strong and fearless, or in food and confident. The majority of us are not in that category. These are folks who are serious cyclists. The majority of us, especially with kids, really want to be off the street, especially in this era of distracted drivers, where it's now even scary being in a bike lane. There's a group here called No Way, No How, which said, I'm not going to get on a bike no matter what. But the majority of us want a safe place, something to bike in. So it's not even a sidewalk against the street, it's a street, it's some type of tree lawn, and then a bike lane and sidewalk. It means that over time, and you're familiar with that idea of complete streets, that over time, you start requiring that every one of your streets has some type of section that looks like that. So you are gracefully and elegantly accommodating cyclists, baby strollers, walkers, and that is the, to me, one of the most crucial attributes we talked about in this vision, is that you're developing this network where you are telling people we respect, we comfort, we want you to be safe, we want you to walk, we want you to bike, and we're not asking you to take your life into your own hands to do. So that's sort of the basic element of the plan. This whole idea, we go back to that one Pittsburgh, that one framework of saying, this is critical if you're going to connect to your new areas of development, that we have to have an interconnected grid, we can't just have single roads or single trail, we need to have an interconnected grid of ways for people to get out to where they want to go. Otherwise, you're going to deal with the same traffic congestion that every other sprawling city in the United States that had to deal with. So you've got to be planning now for what this interconnected network looks like. That's just a vision sketch, we've sort of done these illustrated, almost cartoons through the process, to say, so that may be an example of over time, what this interconnected network of bikeways, sidewalks, greenways, trails may look like in Pittsburgh. And it's comprised of the improvements within corporate limits, there's gaps, there's streets that don't connect, sidewalks that don't connect, but then it goes out and has connectivity, greenways, trails, natural areas, et cetera, out to the larger developer. Right, so that's bikeways and trails. The second one, remember the statistically valid survey, people said, one of the top priorities is restroom. I choose to think people want to spend time in parks, that's what's going on around the country, and so in one sense, restrooms are symbolic of that. The Rand Corporation, which you may know about, put out a national study of what people are looking for in their parks, and this is kind of a long list, between the research we've done and studies like the Rand Corporation. We're in a different era in park design. You're not as old as me, but when I grew up, the idea was you should have that swing set, you had some open space, maybe you had some water, and that was good enough. I had a previous park director said, he remembers the day when his job was to say, do you want a red swing set or a blue swing set? And just tell me which answer it is, and that's all you do. People are asking for far more things now in the parks than other people. They want to stay in the parks, but they want to be entertained, occupied, et cetera. And so you're seeing the demand for everything from wifi to dog parks to playgrounds for all ages, shade, shade, shade. The Rand Corporation said the number one way to get people activated in the parks was some type of multi-purpose path. It can be as small as you want, but almost every park's got a multi-purpose loop. If it has exercise stations, so much the better, if it has mile markers, so much the better. But people will swarm out there to just socialize with friends, get exercise, it's pretty amazing when you build one to see what happens. So this part of the vision says that every one of your existing parks should have, wherever possible, these types of elements, and that we should also make that standard in future parks, so they're being developed by developers. One of the issues in park design is you have very few ways to express the brand or the image of a community. I have one client who recently purchased a prefabricated restroom building in their park, and it's one of the ugliest restroom buildings I've ever seen, and it could be anywhere in the United States. It does nothing, and you would say, well, who cares about a restroom building? Well, a restroom building can start to establish the character and brand of the community, reflects, even though it's a lowly restroom building, the billions, restrooms, park architecture starts to express who you are and what you think of yourself. One of the wonderful things you've done, and I think of the sculpture in several of your parks, but particularly in terms of the sculpture, it's very extender. You know, if you walk there and you say, this is a different kind of place, this is a really cool town that thought about doing this kind of thing. And so architecture, design, all of the, every element on that list, for example, could involve a public artist. There's no reason, there's no reason benches have to be off the shelf. You can invite public artists to design the site for you. So all kinds of ways that you can engage the community in the design. I'm going to go way off on the tangent for a minute. If you go to New York, has anybody visited New York lately? If you want your brain exploded on current trends in parks and recreation, go spend a day and maybe a pattern. But one of the things that they did in Bryant Park, which is the heart of New York, they had the Bryant Park Chair. Well, Battery Park in New York is doing a Battery Park Chair competition. They have invited designers from all over the world to submit designs for a chair like this, and it can be outside, and in Battery Park, you have their submittals on platforms, and you can go sit in each of the chairs and rate them and put your vote in the ballot box. But the whole idea of establishing, and the beauty of movable chairs and tables, by the way, if you haven't noticed, is you can move them. You can go, if it's hot, you can put it in the shade, if it's cold, you can put it in the sun. So people, if you're talking about a community that cares about its patrons, then you start leaning yourself off everything being fixed, and you start treating your parks as outdoor living rooms where people can start adjusting things to meet their needs. So the idea of a common architecture is something that you need involving public artists, et cetera, important. Each of your parks, your existing parks, need to have master plans, so you have some that do, but you have others that don't. So kind of part of the low hanging fruit for you is moving forward, and you'll see this in the implementation strategy, is that you start either updating your master plans for parks to include all those amenities that I talked about, or you create master plans for the current parks. So we've done some quick sketches just to show you some of the opportunities. So for example, we met with someone from So for example, we met with someone from Kiwanis who talked about that they're interested in expanding the Kiwanis playground. They're interested in older age groups, so you have this potential. So what you need is a master plan to take the entire Kiwanis site, however much they're willing to let you use, and talk about what would that park feel? In the vision document, you mentioned that your existing system is what I call a venue system. It's almost like you have one of each type of park. You have a sports park with a plan and you have this being sort of your playground park. You have Town Lake, which is really your signature C Y passive park. So for the time being, it's kind of an interesting idea to say, "How do we push each one of those to be what some folks talk about best in class? How do we get that to be the best kids playground park?" There's great examples. But how do we take each of the parks that we have and make them as good as a community? Speaking of the plan and, this is a really interesting one to me because there's so many constraints, but yet it's got such great potential because of all of its neighbors. So here you have the tennis courts, which are popular. You have basketball courts. You're talking about the new skate park, and I don't know the latest status on that. And you're really, really land constrained, right? But you have all these public uses surrounding you. Say you have the sheriff's department, you have the school. This is not a public use, but they have a Rockford USA site. So one of the questions for the plan is, are there ways to expand it? Either through acquisition of land, even something as simple as creating a cover here where there's a ditch and see if the sheriff will let you use it somewhere in the property. Or joint use agreements, acquisition, whatever it is. But how do you take that park and really turn it into a great, fun, almost an extreme sports type of facility? All kinds of sports courts, all types of activities. If you go back to this idea of high performance, you know, it's a social hub. It can hopefully maybe food trucks show up every once in a while, so it generates some economic activity. There's all kinds of ways for you to take an activity center like that and make it meet more of the needs of the community. This is one of my favorites. Town Lake has so much potential to be more than it is today. Everything from getting the parking, this number five says, "Move the parking away from the lake so you really get this wonderful lakefront that should be good after." Multipurpose meals, larger, you know, playground, having more places to put in. So I went exploring this afternoon to see, how do you get back here? This is kind of difficult. But are there ways you can have multiple entrances to the park? Multiple put in places for my kayak or canoe or paddleboard. It's a lot of opportunity to really, really make that park shine as kind of your signature park. So those are two of the vision elements. The third one, I moved it here in our order because I want to go back to Town Lake. The third one is, your downtown's going to continue to be challenged, and you know that you did the downtown study. But it's charming downtown, but you're going to over time allow a lot of other commercial mixed use development, to my understanding. And so your own downtown's going to have to compete with the new development that you're approving elsewhere. And so downtown's going to have to, there's going to have to be a reason to come downtown. And there's all kinds of examples you've seen, you've all traveled around the United States that have this exact problem. And so one of the responses, and a lot of downtowns, this one's where I live, this is downtown Gainesville, this is downtown Reno, the tallest park. One of the responses is to create your signature gathering space downtown, where you can have special events and festivals and movies. And there's got to be this interconnectivity grid between the public space programming, your merchants, activities going on. And so when we had our visioning workshop, we really talked about, where is our land right here? Where is the land to develop the downtown park? And there's some ideas. We had some sites to north, we had some sites over. But I emailed Paul in the middle of the night or on a weekend or something and said, "Have we ever looked at the connection between here and here? Is there a way, this backdoor idea? Is there a way that Town Lake Park could not only connect to downtown, but can be expanded?" And you have some parcels under for sale, you have some parcels that may be for sale over time. But the thought occurred to me that, well, with adjacent to this, adjacent to the plan and with less than a half a mile from the back entrance to downtown, could Town Lake be your signature downtown park or something? It's got all the bone structures, it's got all the potential to be this great quintessential downtown park. But it was just a thought for you. This is another project I've written. This is the City of Kissimmee, which is sixty thousand people. And this is called Lakefront Park in Kissimmee, developed as a way to be a catalyst for redevelopment of the downtown. And it is the City of Kissimmee's public backyard. It's just an incredibly beautiful park. I don't know the size wise, I'd have to compare it to Town Lake. But the same idea, the same potential, where you can walk from downtown to the park, and it's where the town hosts all of its special events. And when the special events aren't there, you can show up at any time. Here's normal furniture, there's podiums, people bring their dinner, they stay out there till ten o'clock at night. It really is this urban public park. So just some thought for you, whether or not you want to invest in it. So, fourth part for the vision is, in addition to fixing up existing parks, you know that you're going to need to develop new parks over time. Both yourselves and through development. There is a list in those nineteen ninety-six guidelines from NRPA I showed you that classify parks. And it's mine body. And it goes from pocket parks to mini parks to neighborhood parks to community parks to regional parks to district parks. You have a lot of classifications in your current U D O and your codes. I came across this, which I love, which is nineteen thirty-two plan from Olmstead to Los Angeles. This whole book, by the way, is about, they sure wish they had developed that Olmstead plan back in the nineteen thirties and forties, because Los Angeles wouldn't look like it is today if they had developed that plan. This whole book is about what went wrong, why didn't they develop this brilliant plan? But one of the things that Olmstead said is, "There's only two kinds of parks." And I think you should adopt this mindset in your codes and in your dealings, both with yourselves and with developers. You have local parks that serve local needs, right? And they can be easily duplicated and they're accessible. So if you want to call them neighborhood parks, call them local parks, doesn't matter. They're serving local needs. And then you have these parks that are larger, think Town Lake. They serve mainly regional needs. They cost more, they're not easily duplicable, but people expect they're going to have to travel a distance to reach. To me, this is game changing for so many agencies in the United States. Because again, you have this convoluted classification system. I'm proposing you all have two types of parks. And it's much easier to codify, it's much easier to not get twisted up into, well, if it's ten acres, it must be this, if it's twelve acres, it must be this, if it includes stormwater, it must be this. So it's very, very simple concept. So the idea is an equity model. It says every resident should be able to walk to a local park. In your higher density areas, it may be a half mile, right? It may be a five or ten minute walk. And in your more rural suburban areas, a little bit longer. This is the mayor of St. Petersburg, Florida, who talked about mayor's goal, every child should be able to walk to a park in a half a mile of their home. It's a very, very simple, compelling concept. The Trust for Public Land has a ten minute walk initiative nationwide. Everybody in the United States should be able to get to a park in a ten minute walk of their home. Very, very simple, compelling idea. So, we have said that we need to take it one step further, and you are not alone in the folks I'm advocating this to. Most of our land development codes, including yours, say that we want a percentage of acreage shut aside for parks, or we want accessibility. But we don't prescribe what we want. We prescribe what we want for roads, we prescribe what we want for storm drainage, but we don't treat parks as as part of the infrastructure package. So part of our plan for you says that we believe you need to develop a prototype of a local park like this, eight to ten acres plus remnants, that every resident should be able to walk to. If it's within the existing corporate limits, you'll be developing some of these parks. But for new development, you'd be asking them to develop some of these parks. So you would codify the prototype, you would codify the concept of walkability to a park for a resident. And you would use some type of prototype to get what you want. As opposed to being surprised when you, what you've got. Commissioner, I was asking, listening to your question about, does that count? Does that courtyard count? Does that stormwater pond count? What counts to the successful level of service for parks and open spaces? The prototype helps you get away from that. It says, "We are requiring for developments of certain size that you create this." This is what we know residents around the country are looking for. It's a basic concept. But that prototype bases into your codes in addition to your acreage requirement. If you take that idea, then this is a map of potentially where your future local parks may occur. And there's about thirty-five of them or so. So if they're, you know, somewhere around ten acres a piece, that's three hundred and fifty acres, which helps you achieve maintenance of the level of service for acres that you currently have. So the mindset here is in certain areas, a little bit closer, areas where you think there's higher density, other areas where there's lower density, maybe a little bit away. But each of those dots, it represents a future local park to be either developed by you or developed by developers. Then you have these larger community parks. So I can get a lot of my recreation needs met close to home, right? I can have, I can take my kids, we can throw a ball in this multipurpose open space. Sorry, I'm going to go back to that. I can have multipurpose open space, I can maybe play some tennis or some pickleball. I've got multi, I can't play full court basketball, but my kids can play basketball. I can kick things, we have this multipurpose walking path, avenue, a small lake or a natural area. A awful lot of my recreation needs can be met there. But I got certain things that can't be met there, such as recreation centers, multi-field athletic complexes, large dog parks. And so what we're saying is, you've got about five locations that we've identified. The idea is we're five to ten miles from every resident. If you're close to them, maybe three miles. And so we've got four or five locations coming down here. And maybe they're a hundred to two hundred acres a piece. And the idea, and this relates to the fifth category, is that they are one of the house athletic fields. So I'm mixing two things with you. I'm mixing the idea of future large parks with athletic fields. So I'm going to change speed a little bit on you now, I'm going to connect this. In the athletic fields area, you have the idea that my kid learns to play ball on recreational fields. And they're involved in a league where they compete there. And then you have the travel team, the really, really intense users of tournament facilities. And we talked about this in the vision workshop, and we said, "If we were Pittsburgh and we don't have unlimited and optimum money, then we probably need to stay in the recreational competition area. We Pittsburgh have no need probably to go build thirty, twenty million dollar tournament sports complexes. If the county is entrusted, or the tourism development agency is entrusted, maybe we're a partner. But that we Pittsburgh should focus on recreational competition." And so what it means is that you would do it within one of these large multipurpose parks, right? So you have, in this one, for example, this has a recreation center, there's some products, complex, etc. So over time, working with various partners, so for example, Chatham Parks got a couple of sites that may be capable of accommodating this type of use. You would work with partners, you'd work with the county, you'd work with Chatham Park, you'd work with other developers, you'd use Impact These, whatever techniques. But you would have three or four or five of these big parks as you grow, right? So you don't grow as much as, as you grow, as the population increases, residents will want access to some type of facility like that. So again, you have these two kinds of parks. Small local parks, large multipurpose parks, community parks that include these athletic facilities. I think we have three more. So, in addition to larger community parks, small local parks, residents that say they're interested in the recreational aquatic centers, those are expensive. But if you first have the sites available, so we go back to these large multipurpose sites, you probably only need two or three of these centers long term. They could either be inside these large multipurpose parks, or they could be separate facilities. So twenty or thirty thousand square feet. We talk about one or two square foot per capita, and it's kind of a national rule of thumb. So if you're a sixty thousand person community, two of these large recreation centers, everybody's got access within, say, five miles or six miles of their house. And then you may have smaller satellite facilities like splash pads at these other parks. But again, we're back to this idea of small local parks and the large multipurpose parks, including as growth occurs, recreational aquatic centers. Again, the expectation isn't that you do this yourself, that as you get into these larger, more expensive facilities, you want other people to come use those facilities to help offset the costs. There'll be fee schedules, et cetera. So partners are given, right? So then you have to decide what your role is over time. But that the idea is that you're engaging YMCA, boys and girls clubs, the county, developers, et cetera, building your own different facility. So the seventh part of the vision is, how do you protect these incredible resources that you have for habitat management, for work quality, for flood control, et cetera? And so again, we're saying with partners, this is the math that the Chatham Conservation Partnership did, how many years ago? Five, ten, better? So trying to understand, doing an assessment of biodiversity and wildlife assessment. And I love the kind of green printing math they came up with, which is, these are the areas that we need to be protected. What the vision plan talks about is that protection comes in all shapes and sizes. Protection comes from piece simple acquisition, it comes from conservation easements, it comes from best management practices, it comes from donations, it comes from grants. There's all kinds of ways to do it. But it starts with in two thousand and eighteen, well, you've already started some. In two thousand and eighteen, building on the work that's been done, to decide long term what lands you do not want to see being developed. Which lands do you want to protect? And then you start trying to figure out how to develop it. And there's all kinds of great models around the United States of communities such as yours who have come to start their own local land acquisition program. What we said is that effective programs typically have these things. The order may be a little bit different. They always start with some citizens group, ideally appointed by you, who are charged with coming up with what criteria we use to determine what lands we want to target for protection and prioritizing those lands. So every environmental lands prior initiative I've been involved in, at some point has an identified protection map, a list of properties. They have prioritization criteria, and then they go looking for multiple sources of funding. You know, agencies like the Trust for Public Land and nature consultants who are more than happy to help and be involved in those types of initiatives. But it starts with you coming up with, having the interest first of all, deciding this is important and creating a community to be important. So when you aggregate all those things I talked about, this doesn't show all the colors, that's the aggregate of local parks, community parks, bikeways, trails, conservation lands, recreational aquatic centers. So to me, this is, again, it's a vision for not just meeting parks and recreation needs, it's a vision for a framework by which you would grow over time. This is really the green infrastructure, is what a lot of people talk about, of your thirty, forty year vision. If you aggregate those lands, by the way, just, I thought it was interesting to note, you have about a hundred acres of parkland now. If you built those thirty-five plus ten acre parks, and I say you, you or the developer, those are built. If you develop these large multipurpose parks of about a hundred and fifteen acres a piece, you would have about twelve hundred acres of park, of developable parkland. That doesn't include greenways and trails and conservation areas. Twelve hundred acres of developable parkland. That will support a population of around sixty-five to seventy thousand people at a level of service that's equal to what you have now. Eighteen acres per thousand times about seventy gets you somewhere around twelve hundred acres. So that's kind of the mindset, that as you move over time, you maintain this level of service that you have, parcel by parcel by parcel. So now for the really fun slide, which is, it's not just about building it, it's also the challenge of maintaining. And just, you know, some rude awakenings. This is from the National Recreation Parks Association findings of their benchmarking across the country. This is a national meeting. National meeting, operating expenditure of seventy-eight dollars per year. That's the equivalent of you having about a four and a half million dollar parks and recreation operating budget by the time you are at about sixty-five, seventy thousand people, right? That I think is close to your current townwide operating budget. But to give you a sense of the order of magnitude, this is sort of that, you know, the average seventy thousand person community around the United States, it's not that much. The average, based on this ten thousand residents on seven, is over fifty parks and recreation staff. If you were operating and maintaining and programming the entire system yourself without yourself without sixty-seven thousand people. So it's interesting looking at these benchmarks, and there's all kinds of variables in terms of population density, et cetera, but it is, it's a good indicator, whether it's high or low, doesn't matter, it gives you a sense of the order of magnitude of what similar agencies spend and do who are similar to the city you're going to become, right? And they have all kinds of information.
Is one of those talking about level of service?
Yeah, this one talks about the acreage level service.
Okay, that, that, okay, 'cause I think quite.
Yeah, the median's about ten acres per dollar.
Okay.
So we believe you should try to save up, eighteen acres, but that's about that, the median, ten acres per dollar.
Would it likely be that the cost would go up?
What do you mean?
Seventy-eight dollars per capita?
Over time?
On a level of service of ten, if we're at eighteen?
Oh, it depends on the type of land.
Yeah.
The more urban and the more expensive, right, the more it is maintained, the more open space and paths, the less it is. So yeah, there is, there are metrics in there of the cost per acre. That's an interesting question. So if you wanna, I'll make it, we'll take a look. I just, I like it because there's nothing else you have that tells you what it might be, but it's great in 2018, we're talking about what our cost might be in 2048.
And this is current dollars?
Yeah.
Or was this very recent?
Yeah, recently, there, 2018.
I'm sorry.
Agency Performance Review.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's based on, it's not perfect, it's based on the agencies that submit data to them, right? So maybe there's several hundred agencies at summer counties, summer cities, summer urban, summer suburban. You can go through their data and pick the agencies that you think are most similar to you, but it's an interesting exercise. And again, it doesn't matter to me if it's perfect or not, it's just the order of magnitude. So one of our recommendations for you is, this would be a great time for you to start talking about where you want to go as a partner. So we talked about in our recommendations, can you start coming up with your classification system, your different models, what your organizational structure is going to look like, who are you gonna partner with? There's all these things that I think of framework ideas, you get into programming. There are agencies, by the way, who contract a lot of things out. There are agencies who maintain minimal staff and contract out programming, contract out for maintenance. So you have to decide which model suits you. I'm dealing with one agency right now that is just incorporated. So they've got a large population, but they, they don't own a thing yet, because they're going from unincorporated to incorporated, the town owns nothing. So what, what model do you want to follow? Where do you want to go? You, in some ways, are very similar to that, you're just starting out, and so what do you want to capture the creation of, to look at in the future? So any questions about the vision? I know there's awful lot to throw at you, but I'm pleased, I think it's very thoughtful. We, we really had a great group of citizens working with us, we've given a lot of thought into those elements, and so to me, it's a compelling vision moving forward. You'll have to decide over time which pieces, parts you want to implement. You okay with us moving into implementation, and now I'm almost done, and you still have questions? So we were trying to prioritize. I gave Brian all kinds of opportunities to tell me he had a couple hundred million dollars available, and no point would he say, "Don't worry about money." So we were trying to figure out what was an implementation strategy that would make sense for you right now, right? There's not a money stream you can go, so we were talking about, can we start many of these things? Can we start looking at a parks and recreation department, is there an opportunity to hire at least one or two more staff? Should we start working on a long-range funding plan? Definitely need, you've got all this development coming, you definitely need, if you, if you believe in this vision, these ideas, you need to update the UDO and land on the bags to reflect that. Perfect time, because you've got all these folks coming in. You've got a lot of partners with different partnerships with different agencies, great opportunity to strengthen those partnerships. And then wherever possible, you do make improvements every year, wherever possible, acquire some land, make capital improvements. Part of the strategy for that, so I'm gonna give you a quick overview of some of the ideas that came out of here, just, I'm cherry picking. One of them was coming up with level of service metrics. And so, that's really hard to read. All you need to know is we've established, this I, eighteen acres per thousand, we've established all the first metrics for rec center and access facilities. These could be incorporated into both your UDO and your land development. And so the idea, did you, Brian, okay? And so you can take level of service metrics, try them out, massage them through the years, that you can use this as a basis for anything from redevelopment to impact these, et cetera. So that's one tool that you have, the toolkit that you could code up. Another one is, you're not clear in your current documents about what your role is and what the developer's role. And so one of the things that we've been trying to separate is the developer focusing on two things. Developing those local parks, and then seeing if you can have homeowners associations somewhat other than the town take over the maintenance of those facilities. One of the issues you're gonna run into is what type of staff will you need to have in place if you take over the maintenance of forty, you know, small neighborhood parks? So there's that whole question about, where does the land come from? Who builds the capital improvements and who maintains? And so this chart says, as much as possible, we think that the developer of a new community should build a local park, a neighborhood park, that meets the needs of those residents, that's gonna be their park, and figure out some mechanisms such as a homeowners association to maintain. The town meanwhile, should be focusing on filling in the gaps of local parks in the existing corporate limits, where you have gaps, and you should be focusing on these larger facilities, partnerships to develop trails, to develop rec centers, these things that developers can't do on their own property, that you should be focusing on those. So we have a chart in the vision that talks about, that division of responsibilities, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about that. And then we have this final slide, and we have, what could you do in the next year or two to move forward? Now, I'll just read the highlights. So we talked about, if you need, you know, you have a parks and rec staff of one, at some point, that's gotta change. So the low-hanging fruit, item, minority, expand the parks and rec, hire some help to fall. You need a parks and rec, part of the strategic plan like we talked about. So it doesn't cost a lot of money to do that, but you need a plan to move forward. I think that you're in the process of updating your unified development order, your UDO and subdivision reg, but you need a, somebody who's conversant with parks and open space can help you update that UDO and subdivision regulations to reflect this vision if you choose to do that. So you need a code writer who also understands parks and rec. This idea of a twenty-five-year funding plan, you know, I don't know where to tell you to start, you've got a certain amount of tax dollars. There's a toolkit that we have, that we've submitted before, of all the different funding mechanisms. You'll have to decide what the appetite is for everything, from increased mileage to just special districts to your bonds, but, I mean, you all know the toolkit for different funding mechanisms. But somewhere or another, I think you need to come up with, how are we gonna build this vision if you embrace this vision? I was really pleased to hear that you've got the grant money for a bikeways, trail, sidewalk plan. I think that's a critical element, so I'm aiming forward to that, it's really important. We talked about master plans for distant parks, talked about, you know, this is, this is way in the distance. I can't imagine developing a recreation aquatic center until you have another ten or fifteen thousand people living here. But it's not too early to start talking to the partners and talk about different people's plans. So Paul had some discussions with Chatham Park, you know, does someone have a plan? We understand maybe the YMCA is interested in the site, so can you start becoming a partner in some of those discussions? This was low-hanging, the idea of your parks and recreation website being expanded to reflect private providers, other providers, county providers. So if I'm a visitor or a resident, I can go to one site and see all the opportunities for things I can do. You don't have to be the provider, you can be the facilitator. There's a whole bunch of folks that you've already started relationships with, that it'd be great if you could continue. And that's part of what I think is important for another staff person, somebody who's a liaison with county parks and rec, with some of the, with environmental groups, with different groups, so that even though you may not have a lot of money to spend on some of these things, you're at the table. You're at the table talking about trail improvements, conservation lands, rec centers, parks, et This idea of where there's money to go ahead and start acquiring sites within the town corporate limits to fill in those gaps, right? So if walkability is our number one priority, where can you fill in those gaps to make sure everybody can walk through the park? And then a really low-hanging, improved kind of step is, can you go ahead and appoint some type of conservation lands committee to at least start the process of taking that green print map, building on it, creating a long-range vision, talking about funding versus et cetera. So that was a long presentation, and I really appreciate you sitting through it, but we think this is really important stuff for your future. And so at this point, I'll answer any questions that you had, or anything you wanna discuss.
Questions from the board?
It is a lot to take in. I'm just so excited and enthusiastic about the project, and really looking forward to wrapping it up and developing an implementation plan. That's my take.
I'll admit to not getting through the entire package, but I will.
It'll be stellar reading.
Well, it is interesting reading, I'll tell you that. And so I will get comments back to you and/or Paul, my thoughts on it. And I thought you had mentioned earlier, we were looking at items three and four in the plan.
What's, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, the vision and the implementation.
Well, this is all five and six that we're looking at tonight.
Is there a numbering thing?
I mean, it wasn't the material you were.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Three and four were the phases of the project. Those are chapters.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. So five and six is the vision and implementation strategy. There is a lot more than you wanna know. In the beginning of the work with the existing conditions assessment and needs assessment, we had do the UDO, we made that its own separate chapters, and we broke up the first two phases and the four chapters. So that's where.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, can we get the power?
Yeah, I just got it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, and I guess honestly, I gotta look at the, the maps on, online PDF, 'cause I need half by eleven.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah. Everything here came from that document, so no surprise there, it's really a summary. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul has the, his overview. If you have thoughts, by the way, you're talking about the implementation strategy, we really went as far as we could figure out how to go without any kind of dedicated funding portion. So if there are thoughts about that, let Paul know that we can quickly do some.
Very good. Thank you, David Barr. That's a wonderful presentation. Our last item under old business is the additional elements, public facilities, and we'll be discussing that with Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. From the board, tonight we continue our discussion with Chatham Park on public facilities. As we remember, public facilities cover a wide range of public uses, public responsibilities, fire fleets, public water, public sewer, schools, parks and recreation, and administrative functions of the town. But you all have had a fair number of discussions with Chatham Park at our meetings, and we have gotten to a point where we're really, as it, as it is by chance tonight, wrapping up or continuing the discussion of parks and recreation. Chatham Park has provided for you all a revised element, and in that revised element, there was a number of changes that related to parks and recreation that they have developed over the last few weeks. Included in your packet was a synopsis from their attorney to staff on those changes that will be discussed tonight. Those changes were related to parkland provided, a new section titled "The Nature of Parkland to be Dedicated," excess parkland, park facilities, those were all new sections to this element. And then the pavement and loo section has been modified to be more clear as to what Chatham Park wants to do and the town is what they're asking the town to do. The nature of the town park to be dedicated is really a new section that staff worked for the Chatham Park on to try to determine if they are to provide land at some point in time, they are gonna provide land, and it's going to be a town facility. What's the minimum requirements that the, that the town would want to see that land to look like and operate, and what, what type of town amenities might be there, water, sewer, on the public street? So those, those are all in that, that section there. And then the new, new section called "Park Facilities" goes into those, into funds that Chatham Park would provide to the town for these seven park service areas, essentially the seven parks, ten-acre parks that, that Chatham Park would be building. And there's a, there's a dollar amount that they're suggesting to not exceed in that, that section. With that being said, I will turn it over to Chatham Park and their, their folks to walk you through all their changes. Staff is here, including Paul, that we can discuss. Staff did just receive this late Tuesday. We have not had a full time with this to fully look at all the things that were discussed tonight in our Parks Master Plan, and sort of compare that to what Chatham Park is offering in their elements. So it may, it may be that Paul or myself just, it's not quite ready to make a recommendation on certain aspects of this, but certainly I think you all should discuss it, and we will be here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Hank Eagle and Chuck Smith? Thank you.
Mr. Eagle may leave me on my own tonight, I don't know.
No, Chuck.
At least it's not midnight.
Yeah, really. Mr. Barnes? No, whatever, thanks again.
Oh, Chuck, thank you. I watched you strain your neck trying to see this thing, and I appreciate the fact that it's hard for you to see, so. I thought, I'm not, I wanted, first of all, Mr. Barr's not in here. He's got his own.
You wanna look at my screen?
No, no. We're not the least, but you're.
We really don't understand.
Well, you can look over your shoulder.
Over here.
Get it better here. Uh, let's see, I wanna hand this out to you. I wanted to, 'cause I knew this presentation was gonna be tonight. I wanted, and Mr. Fioke gave me this idea and suggested this, that we spend some time, we, we never really have given you a complete picture of what we are proposing from a parks and recreation standpoint for Chatham Park. I mean, we've been giving you little snippets here, and we've talked, during the open space element, we've talked about different pieces of it, but we'd never really tried to go through a complete, uh, look at what we're doing. So that's what I, I wanted to spend time with, and I've got, this, this has been something that's been changing, so I didn't put this in the slides, and you probably will know Now let me start off by saying, that was an excellent presentation. That was, I really thought that was excellent. And I, I'm a landscape art tech. Fred Plow Omsdott is the father of our profession, so I really appreciate the fact that he was talking about Mr. Omsdott that way. So, I'm sure I'll do this right. I wanted to just, first of all, go over the different parks that we have committed to in different places, either in the master plan or other elements that we have already gotten approved. Some of these are in the, the small area plan that we've submitted that has not been approved yet. So I can't say that everything's been approved, but at the same time, it follows. yet, so I can't say that everything's been approved, but at the same time, it follows the vision of what we're trying to provide, and I'm glad that we're doing this behind what you just heard, because I think a lot of it falls in line with what you just heard. So I want to start out with, and Mr., should I call you Mr. Barth or Dr. Barth?
Anyone. Mr. Dr. Barth.
David. We felt like, and he talked about large, he used the community parks as the larger park, and we believe that because of just, I guess, the location of Chatham Park, that we've got the opportunity to go to the regional or district level with some of the facilities that we've proposed. So I'll start off with the first one, and we're, because of that, we're showing a service area that really is the eastern half of the county, if you will, that I think would be using these facilities much beyond Chatham Park as a service area. The first one, we specifically, we located, in this case, it's, we've located seventeen acres adjacent to the state parklands that are out on the Hall River. We did that with thinking, with the thinking that we've used in other projects, and the go-by that we talked about before, is Hemlock Bluffs Park in Cary, that Hemlock Bluffs was state land adjacent to Swift Creek, protecting steep bluffs in the most southern location of Canadian Hemlock. And so, same sort of thinking with that land, that the state did not want to develop it. And so there are soft surface trails on that land, and that's it. But Tim, through other projects that he had been working on, donated land adjacent to that parkland, and then that land took the parking, was the trailhead for all those trails, has a nature center. We're showing that this would be a possibility for some significant nature center. It's really the trailhead for the, what we have been planning. Mr. Horn's been part of this, and the county's been part of this, other stakeholders have been part of this. Hall River Greenway that's been talked about along the river, and putting the development portion of that park on a park that we have located in the North Village, that would be, for the most part, passive, but I really think it's more of a regional draw as opposed to just the Chatham Park neighborhood using it. And I think from some of the comments that I've heard from Bynum, and how they've been kind of inundated with people coming in through their development to get down and park along the river and use different things, I think this would be a facility that probably more than anyone else, they would appreciate. So that's the first of three regional parks that we're showing on our plan. The second one, and we've talked a bit about this with you before too, and we've been in some of the stakeholder meetings, both with the county's recreation planning that's going on, and the meetings that you all had as part of developing your plan, that there was a need for a larger sports complex in town. And this was, this was a site that was approved as part of the approval of the master plan down on the southwest corner of Chatham Park. It's a forty-five acre site, and that we're thinking that it would hold these types of activities, that would be a more regional look at baseball and softball. So what, we've done plans that we've shared with staff, although it's just, you know, kind of conceptual sorts of plans, that show a four baseball softball complex, that show three adult soccer fields and so forth. And we also, again, the go-by that we were using for this park was Bond Park in Cary. It's a three hundred acre facility that started with a twenty acre park dedication from the developer as part of the approval of the Preston P D D. That two hundred acres became three hundred, and we tried to locate this in an area that could add adjacent properties to it and grow that facility if that was something that the town desired in the future. And we think the location works well for the rest of town. Again, it's not something that's in the center of our project, and we see it as serving a larger area than Chatham Park. And the third one is, again, this was something that we memorialized in the open space element, that two hundred and fifty acre park that, down in the southeast corner of Chatham Park. And it's our closest piece of land to Jordan Lake, and so the possibility exists for more water-related activities being, you know, the center of the philosophy of what's going to happen with that park. And again, I see, obviously, there's other stakeholders, whether it's the Corps, or the State, or other people that you're going to probably be entering into conversations with that particular park, but I think as the area develops, that's going to be a real possibility for that. Again, we're not trying to tell you, these are going to be your decisions on how these parks are used, we just located the land such that there are opportunities to do these sorts of things. And again, we think it holds the opportunity for larger parks, as Mr. Barth was talking about in his presentation. One of the things that we've talked about that I don't know if it fits into the ability of your approvals, but we are partnering with Y M C A, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. And we've talked about, to them about using, some of this, or using this land for a resident park possibly, as they've done with other facilities that they, in a camp, so you all see fair. Chapel Hill Y M C A has clear water that's north of here, that is a stressed property from a camping standpoint, but it could serve the needs of this area in that regard if that was something that the town thought made sense. Then we get to what we call our, the community size parks, and we've got three of those located. And again, I think this is consistent with what was presented earlier. We're showing a three mile service area for each of those, two of those located in the North Village, and since we've got the two regional parks south, we're showing a community park within the South Village. The first one is in the, kind of straddles our property, the Chatham Park property with the Malot property, and it's a thirty-five acre site that can, I think probably would have some ball fields in it as well, but my philosophy, my philosophy on really a lot of these park designs is, as the opportunity comes to develop them, you're looking at site features, you're looking at what community needs are at that time to determine what's going to go on that site. And so you're not necessarily trying to say that it's going to be one particular thing right now, but with the land as the, providing the land is the first step, and that's a fairly central location in our North Village. Secondly, we've talked about this before too, because we've located a park site between our proposed Y M C A site and Chatham County Elementary School site. And we think by doing that, there's an opportunity for more efficient use of facilities. And the Y and the school system are already partnering together with their after-school programs, and with reading programs and other programs that the Y is part of right now without having a facility. So we think putting these three together present a good opportunity for a community park. And then finally, in the south, we've, again, through the open space element, we've provided parkland in the Robeson Creek area, and because it's in that area, more sensitive environmentally, we're showing, I mean, we think that when that develops, it'll be something that's more on the passive end than active end of recreation, but again, it's the acreage that we've got there, I think right now is around sixty-five acres that we've got shown for that level park. Then supplementing this, we've got five neighborhood parks that are minimum ten acres, and this goes back to the concept presented and approved in the master plan of park planning areas, and each, each planning area having a minimum ten acre park. So each of these parks fill the remaining areas that have not already been addressed with the other parks. And again, this is going to be, you've already seen conceptual plans on what goes on in neighborhood parks, but, so I'm not going to try to get into the programming of that so much right now. But now, I'll just point you to the handout that I gave you. And where we, where we end up with this, if you look at the first page summarizes the number of acres, and the, just through the various commitments we've made, with the maximum build out in our project, we would end up with eight hundred and sixty-one acres of parkland. Now, I didn't mention greenways, that does include thirty miles of greenways as part of that. So it's, what, seven hundred and fifty acres of parkland, one hundred acres of greenway land, trail, trail land, and I'll get into this in a second, because I want to talk about level of service, but you'll see under there too, we've got ninety-seven acres of private, private recreation land that would be made up, as you see listed below that, with apartment recreation sites, age-restricted community recreation sites, our homeowner recreation sites, and then the Y M C A that we've been talking about. Now, on the next page is a little bit deeper look at our, what we see as our population projections, because different, different types of units are going to generate different numbers of people, and so the, we aren't, we're showing, as you can see, for age-restricted, we're showing one point nine persons per household, for the apartments, an average of one point six, because there's going to be a fairly significant percentage placed on one-bedroom apartments. Ms. Baldwin and Mr. Fioco have been in our affordable housing meetings, hearing from the county about how the biggest efficiency is in apartments, and specifically one-bedroom apartments, and meeting needs from an affordable housing standpoint, so we're going to be going fairly strong in that direction. These numbers, four thousand age-restricted and fifty-five hundred apartments, the fifty-five hundred apartments is based on a development rate of twenty-five percent of our units being apartments, and that's historically been the number in this region for the last forty years, since it's really been growing. And so we're projecting, and really, if you read the newspaper today, it's, you know, it's been going at a higher rate than that recently. And so we think that's a conservative number, and based on the demographics and based on conversations we've had with age-restricted developers, this is, I think, a fairly conservative, we've had people approach us about doing the whole project in this kind of the village of North, the villages of North Carolina sort of thing. We have no desire to be that. So we're trying to get a fairly diverse community, and so a portion of it does meet that demographic there. And then the rest of the units are figured at that two-point-six number. So we get, and with this and the Malot project that you'll be receiving a rezoning for in the next few months, since it's kind of an infill project, which I, I mean, with Chatham Park, we're looking at this together, that leads our population to just under forty-nine thousand, forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety. So then when you look at the level of service, with just the public land that we talked about earlier, that's seventeen point six acres per thousand population, and the private land added to that is two acres, so that gives us nineteen point six acres per thousand population. So your recommendation is, or at least you've said that your existing level of service is eighteen acres, we think we're in line with that, we think we exceed that. And I'm going to get into the numbers of what's going to go on with those acres in a second. Secondly, I want, just from the greenway standpoint, the town of Cary, and I think Paul's mentioned this to you before, if they don't have the best greenway system in the state, it's one of the best, they have eighty miles of greenway per hundred and sixty thousand people, so they've got a half mile of greenway per thousand population. And we're proposing with thirty miles, and I think it'll be beyond that, but I'm trying to be conservative with these numbers, that we're at point six miles per thousand population, but exceeds, which exceeds that system in Cary. So we, the next page gets into what the dollars that we are spending on developing these facilities. It was interesting, and Mr. Fioco was probably smiling during this part of the presentation when we were talking about bike lanes, and, because we've had the same conversation, and we are spending an extra thirty-six million dollars to provide bike lanes within the right-of-way. And we hear tonight that that's where most people prefer, that they not be located. We will be happy to put them adjacent to the right-of-way. So that'll be your decision, but we've committed to that, and so right now, that's where they are. And with the, these numbers, we are, what we, the, there's another element to this too, that I haven't talked about from a public standpoint. The open space element that we, was approved a few months ago, talks about these open space focal points within neighborhoods that would be developed in some way as an amenity. And so with the, with the vineyards neighborhoods you approved a few weeks ago, you know, we've got four acres in that neighborhood of a one acre park that has playground, trails, a rock outcropping and significant trees that we're saving. So we're taking, we're taking features that are, that we're finding within the neighborhoods, and then developing these small focal points within the neighborhoods around them. That comes to about, if you just translate that through the rest of the project, that's about sixty of these mini parks that'll be one to five acres. And what we've committed to, the rewriting of the element, is that these, these larger parks are, would be, as we've heard, talked about earlier, would be within a half mile of the homes. The smaller, other one to five acre amenities and other facilities that we have would be within a ten-minute walk of each home. No, excuse me, less than that, because it'll be within a quarter, we're trying to locate those within a quarter mile, so, and that's not talking about how proximate the greenways So when you look at just the public side of these numbers, we're providing with the land value and the development value, we're providing a total of two hundred and thirty-three million dollars, or ten thousand dollars per dwelling unit in Chatham Park, just on the public side. And that's, that doesn't include infrastructure serving these properties. Now, not quite, I know, that wasn't in the presentation tonight, but it's in the document, that some of your determination of your level of service that developers should be trying to meet has to do with your land values of your existing system, and a good portion of that is not served with utilities. So I don't, I don't quite know how, if that's a basis for measurement, I'm not how sure all that's going to, or I'm not quite sure how that's going to play out, but I'm just trying to say that we're spending over ten thousand dollars projected, and these are all projected numbers, just looking historically at the way we've done things before, and plus what we've committed to to this point. Over ten thousand dollars, that is publicly accessible to everyone in Pittsburgh, of that land, that we're spending ten, over ten thousand dollars per dwelling unit in Chatham Park. Okay, now, private. As we talked about, we have been working with the Y M C A already, and have a site located in the North Village, and we've worked with, we've three, we've had three other projects that we've done in the past in this region where they have been part of our neighborhoods. We believe in them strongly, and I think that the way they've performed in this town in recent years, I think is a wonderful, they do wonderful things. People in different parts of the country look at the Y M C A differently, they really might. They really model themselves being a family YMCA in this region. And it's, we are very proud to be a partner with them in things that we've done and will be doing here. So we feel like that's going to be, that's something that, if you look at the growth, it'll serve Pittsburgh with this location for many, many years. It's possible that there could be a second location. And they are getting into more creative partnerships as they've gone through time recently. They, we've done one partnership that we worked on with them, where we're a YMCA partner with the Montessori, the Durham County Montessori School as part of their public school system, did a co-facility. They are partnering in Raleigh with the Charter School to build a YMCA Charter School together. They have just recently in Western Lake County partnered with a megachurch in building facility that the Y is using, the community center, the gymnasium, the swimming pool that's in this church during the weekdays basically, and the church gets it on Sundays and Wednesday nights, that sort of thing. So there, obviously, when you're doing these things, as we've heard, there are many partnership opportunities, and that's the best way to leverage your dollars is through exploring those partnerships. And this will, we're already looking at how this may play out in Chatham Park with the YMCA. Then, we're treating our, we've got six homeowners sites shown within Chatham Park that are going to be, that we're saying are five acres. And we're treating those as our other neighborhood parks, supplementing that system because they are fitting into the neighborhood park category. We don't see the need to be putting a neighborhood park for Chatham Park residents right next to the homeowner's facility. So we've going to be filling in, we've got two facilities shown in the North Village, and then we've got four shown in the South Village. And I'll talk about the kind of facilities, or the kind of dollars we're talking about spending on these different private facilities in a second. But you can see that, again, depending on, for the, many of them will have swimming pools, aquatics with them. But it sort of depends, we've got one shown on the river that'll have more of a kayaking, canoeing emphasis to it. So there are many, just depending on the situation. We'll be programming those differently. Then we've got, as I said, we've got age restricted neighborhoods, and they go to pretty creative extremes to provide recreation for their residents. They always have a swimming pool that we've seen. And again, we're not trying to turn this into one 4,000 home neighborhood. We project that they're going to be generally in the 400 lot. And we'll be coming in in the next few months with our first one that'll have about 375 units. And you'll see the amenities that are going to be part of that neighborhood. But we'll be, we project to have 10 different of the 10 different sites within Chatham Park that'll have approximately 400 dwelling units within them. And then have recreation amenities associated with them, pickleball, swimming, gardens. Many of them have workout rooms and fitness rooms within the community building that goes, that has dressing rooms and that sort of thing, serving swimming.
Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that first age restricted community you mentioned will be coming very soon. Is that going to be in the Malaat property?
The first phase of it's going to be in the, in section 7.1 of Chatham Park. We're not doing anything in the Malaat until we get that rezoned.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm off my head, the seven point one is?
It's adjacent to it, and the mosaic is part of 7.1. But it's up in the northwest quarter of our project. So that'll, I'm guessing in the next three to four months, three to four to five months, we'd be submitting a subdivision plan for that first neighborhood. And then finally apartments. Again, with 5,500 apartments, that, 250 is a fairly standard number from an efficiency and management standpoint. That means we would have approximately 22 apartment sites. I've only, just from a programming standpoint, and I guess I can start getting into the dollars of this. But if you've seen, you know, where apartments are going these days with the amenities that they provide for their residents, they're pretty good. Indoor driving ranges, outdoor putting courses, outdoor kitchens, obviously swimming pools, indoor fitness rooms, you know, we probably all should be living there as opposed to what I have at my house. But anyway, it is addressing what the demographic is asking for. And so this, I don't know that you can see it very well, but we are saturated through the project with these, the location of these private facilities beyond what we've been talking about from a public recreation standpoint. As, if I go through with the number of sites we've talked about, we project to having 33 swimming pools. I think you're, you know, some of the, looking further into your plan, as I read it, the standards from a park and recreation standpoint are one swimming pool per 15,000 residents. We're going to have one swimming pool per 1,484 residents. So that's 10 times the number of pools that are recommended from, you know, from the park standards that we heard are not, you know, they really don't have standards anymore. But there's going to be a lot of swimming going on. And that'll take care of swimming for 80% of the population that's, I think, being looked at with your plan. So I do think it'll be a while before you get to some point where you are looking for your own aquatics facility. And that's, I think, and within that time too, the Y would be addressing some of that swimming need from an indoor standpoint at some point. The other facilities, apartments, you know, we didn't talk about dog parks. Dog parks, we haven't talked about outdoor volleyball, splash pads that are in the homeowner's rec sites. You know, all of these things are going to be provided. We have sort of broken it down site by site, and we get to $177 million spent on private recreation. So when you put all those numbers together on the last page, you get to over $400 million spent on recreation, both public and private within Chatham Park, which totals to about $18,000 per unit, per household. We think that's exemplary. So that's who we're going to be from a recreation standpoint. And when I say "we," I do mean "we" because, as I said, 861 acres of this land is going to be your land. It's going to be public land. And the programming of those sites will be something that you are primarily responsible for, but we will all be part of doing together. So I should have said you can ask me questions during all that at the time, but if there's any questions you'd like to ask.
I've got eight questions.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight.
I'll never be that specific. But, so trying to understand the difference between public land and private land.
Yes, sir.
What distinguishes the two? I'm assuming the private land has got some kind of restricted public access or is accessible through some fee that is applied on the right?
Yeah, well, first of all, public is going to be what we dedicate to the town. So that's 861 acres.
So it's land that is deeded to the town?
Now, I'll say, I mean, right now, and we proposed this, and we haven't, you'll hear more specifics as we get into the, we've got recreation specifics with 5.1 that haven't been addressed yet, that is coming before you soon. But we have proposed a couple of, you know, some of these smaller, like the one acre site that we talked about or the three, that, and we've shared this with Mr. Horn and Mr. Jones, that we, some of those things in the element, the master plan allows us, that we would own those. They still would be publicly accessible. That's not the majority of what we're talking about in the...
But I think they would also qualify as the land dedication for dwelling.
If you choose that that is acceptable, yes, they would. And they also need some of the open space details that Mr. Jones had asked us to include in the open space element of having those kind of facilities within the neighborhood.
Six or seven types of smaller amenities, right?
So it's not an inordinate amount of that, but there's enough to activate the community. And again, have something that's relatively close to every home beyond those 10 acre, five to 10 acre neighborhood parks and the HOA facilities.
So we just established that some park land would be private, is privately owned and maintained, but we consider it part of the 667 acres.
Right. Not a lot of that, but there is some of that.
So what is this category here, private land total? What is the distinction about this 97 acres? I'm just trying to understand what it is.
Sure. And if you look at the bottom of that page, I've broken that 97 acres.
Right.
And so that's the, you know, the mosaic, when they turn in their apartment site, will have an acre and a half that's dedicated to their swimming pool that those residents are going to use and other...
That is typically restricted to those.
Right. I'm not saying that, all I'm really saying is, is that because 80% of your population lives in Chatham Park, is going to be using these facilities, then that's less that you've got to provide elsewhere.
Yeah. So I was just trying to figure out, you know, because I don't think of the YMCA as, I guess, restricted, but you've got to be a member, right?
Well, at some level, but they also, and you're experiencing this now, they have after-school programs, they have reading, there are many kids that are using the YMCA without being members. And they also scholarship many of their programs. You'll be, I don't know, you know, we'll be with these park, or with these ball fields that we provide within Chatham Park, you're going to be charging users, you're going to be, every person that's playing on a team is going to pay some small amount of money to be in that league. You'll be charging that to Chatham Park, even though we are providing those facilities just like you will anybody else in town that can use those fields. So it's similar to, the Y does have, I think, I think every park system has non-resident fees for people living outside the town using those facilities. So the Y would have something similar to that as part of that.
Great, thanks.
Seven more? Okay, now, we did make changes to the element, a lot of, I'm not, I was, I'm going to say, I'm going to predict that since you got this Thursday, that you haven't absorbed this yet. Just like your recreation master plan, you got Thursday, you haven't absorbed this yet. So, I mean, I can go over some of these changes that we put in there, but at the same time, if you want to wait until the next meeting to deal with that and have more time to go through that, then we'll entertain questions on that. Because one of the things, I'll say, one of the things that we did add since last time is that we would take a park within each of those seven park areas and commit to a minimum of $500,000 spent on each of those. So that's a new part to that that was not there before.
Well, I invested a tremendous amount of time, and my head hurts. But I appreciate the thoroughness that you guys put forth in this. And honestly, a lot of the questions that I had noted from our previous meeting that we didn't get to actually was addressed. And I think one of the big ones was this concept of what Jeff had described to me, that's what he called park-ready land dedication. That had the road frontage, it had the water, sewer stub. It had the sidewalk access, it had those things that would be part of the roadway infrastructure. And this would be adjacent to it, and then therefore stubbed to it. And then the idea that onsite, there would be an investment equal to $500,000 that would be identified in a partnership with the town in Chatham Park to decide what is the appropriate infrastructure or type of park for this location. And the investment of $500,000 goes a good long way in clearing, grading, prepping, even conceivably paving and creating fields, so...
One of the other things we talked about, and I can't remember if we talked about this with you or not, but written in there is that you have the ability to decide that, okay, you've said 500,000, you could decide that, let's say that sports complex, we'd rather put a million dollars into that than putting nothing into one of the other ones because we want to see that happen. I think another factor in that too is if that, that particular one, if that happens, it's nowhere near our timeline of developing and getting water and sewer to it because we won't be doing anything around it for years. It's got road access, but it wouldn't have water and sewer access if, let's say that you came and said, "We want that today." Because of the need that's out there. And we, and I'll say, there were some passionate people at the meeting I attended about ball fields. And y'all probably heard them as well. So we've offered that if that was something that you thought was a need that needed to, we need to start working on now, that that could be an early dedication that we made.
Well, so I think, you know, that was a very nice, I guess, surprise to see that work out or put into the text. So I think it's great. One of the things that, just from your presentation tonight and just some of the research I've been doing, was the idea that this applies to seven of these park service areas. And A, Park Service A is, I think, the North Village.
No, there are two. A and B is in the North Village. A is between 64 Business and Bypass. So it would be the Vineyard Neighborhood that you just approved. About, well, less than 400 lots. And we've got, we've got a site that we, a 10 acre site that we're ready to discuss with you, but we can get the details a line up with the staff first.
So just now in your presentation, you talked about three neighborhood parks in the North Village. And those are the, I've got in my head, this 10 acre park is called a neighborhood park. And so I thought, well, there's three. And looking at the small area plan, I think the proposed dwelling unit count for the North Village is close to 10,000.
Yeah, well, that's three of the 10 acre parks, but it's also the 25 acre park, the 35 acre park, and then the 17 acre park that we're talking about either being community or regional. And so...
And so with this metric, two of those parks would receive this, well, at least one could possibly get the double share, but typically it would be two parks would get the benefit of that park-ready improvement of $500,000.
Right, and one each in those two areas.
Well, I've got three things. And we have to go through it unless somebody else wants to jump in.
I don't want to jump in. I'll let you do it, but I'm really, I really wasn't expecting this. So I'm redoing it to see specifically, are you talking, are you specifically talking about, that's what it looked like to me, going on and building those parks, dedicating them to the town, putting the equipment there, is that part of what you're saying here, to be clear?
Well, to be clear, seven parks would have that money spent on them. And the greenways would be built within this proposal. And you heard tonight that your number one, two, and three, I think, were greenways, multi-use trails. We haven't thrown any calculation of sidewalks. Sidewalks were mentioned in that presentation, but that's just a part of building the streets. So we haven't, that's not part of this money or part of these facilities.
And I do like the Y, because I was working on the Y a long time.
Yeah, we'll sing praises of Y forever. I think it's a great partner, and we're excited that we can bring that as part of this.
And very comprehensive. I really appreciate you get the week we have here.
Thank you.
So can I list those seven parks?
If you look at, yeah, if you look at, on that first page... If you, if you look at, yeah, if you look at, on that first page, and you see to the right, I've written park area A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, those are the, those are the six G, if you look on the, in the master plan, those are the six, are the seven planning areas in the master plan, and that's just a park that would be proposed to be activated in, one in each of those areas.
I was noticing the slides from David Barth's presentation was underneath it, those service areas were.
Right, and they did have those referred to likely.
Yep.
I can, this is from the master plan, if you take a glance at where the A to G areas are, parts of the planning areas, and the, you know, in the master plan, you're right, I think he had the same areas on this, on this slide.
Ready? I, I'll give it rapid fire, and I don't know if she has to answer or respond.
They have, they have answers for some, and may not for all.
So, page three, Objective Five A. Oh, yeah, I'm looking at a red line for it. But it makes reference in the general facility, says in general, public facilities should have access to primary arterial roadways. I want to strike arterial.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like arterial myself, I was going to ask you what that is, but.
And I'll just strike, honestly, I looked at it too, and I said, primary roadways. Let us.
They're not only in the cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
But yes.
Because I didn't want us to, I mean, in general, be restricted to having, you know, these facilities upon a major arterial.
Sure.
Page seven, this is in the fire. I know that I had had some conversations with Mr. Messick about the wisdom of deeding property to the volunteer fire department, when the town may in the future, and is likely in the future, to have its own fire department, and would then, how would the transfer of assets occur? And Paul was scratching his head as well, so I do know that you've said in here that it could be, the fire department, I think, means Pittsburgh Fire and Rescue or other provider, but I think he was going to work on some language to kind of tighten that up, and I think work with the county and the fire department to kind of approve an issue. And I haven't heard.
If you want, I'm hap, we're happy that they be your sites, and you lease them to the fire department for a dollar, whatever those things are, but.
Right.
Because I really do believe that as we go through time, these are going to be your, I mean, these are going to be your fire stations.
And I think that may be the way to do it. I mean, obviously, we want to support the fire department we have today, but I think we want to look to the future and make sure we're working with each other and not at cross purposes. So I think Paul was working on something, was talking with Darryl about it, and I thought he had communicated with you as well, but kind of like he, he went off the ice one first, so.
And Darryl, the chief, went on vacation too.
Next week.
He's back next week, or he's gone?
He's, he's.
He went somewhere, yeah, we hadn't been able to, but I know Paul is supposed to be getting back some information.
And so one of my thoughts on this document was, it does talk about the deed containing provisions restricting use for fire station or the public facilities purposes, and I'm going to suggest that we have a duration of that restriction identified.
Two hundred years, okay.
Sure. Objective, seven, page seven, objective four, second paragraph, the last sentence.
I'm looking at a red line.
Or it says that it's restricted. Yeah, so I would like to, of course, to put a, a duration on that.
And we, I probably won't answer that now, I'll just, I'll start asking you questions. Obviously, when we give something for fire, we intend for it to be used as fire, and you must have some scenario where it wouldn't be used as fire at some point in time, so.
Yeah, and I honestly couldn't predict forty, fifty years down the road, how it would, it would make sense for it to be something other than fire, the fire may move to a different site. I don't know. Talking about our affordable housing discussions, and how the town, one of the incentives it can provide is land. Well, it, it could make sense that forty years from now, the fire station isn't owned at three acres, that three acres could be redeveloped into affordable housing, and the town can make a contribution of that property. So that's just one scenario that I had envisioned. And I don't know that we would call that the purpose.
Put the site plan or site for a fire department without it being needed first.
Oh, I know.
It wouldn't be down the road to be able to have a mountain spot and not be a fire department, because it's got, you have response times to figure in and all of this, and it wouldn't be, that's what I'm trying to say, it would not be, it would be a fire department needed before they would be asked for any type of deal or any spot, any site.
If I may, I think what Mr. Choco is envisioning is a day when that particular site, already developed as a firehouse, may outlive its usefulness as a firehouse, for whatever reason. We may see fit to need to build a new firehouse on another site, and that could be repurposed. And we need to leave open the door for repurposing, is that fair assessment? That's it. Alex said, we don't want to resolve that at this moment.
But I understand the issue.
It's sort of almost akin to the idea that you all might repurpose in the future a solar farm that you're doing now, and it may, the technology may change, and the usefulness of the solar farm may diminish, and you may completely change your plan in the future.
Page thirteen, has to do with the sewer reservation. And part of my, and specifically what I'm thinking of is the schools. And I know that the current model is for the county to get their act together and build a school long after it's needed. And I know we are all trying to do better with meeting on a regular basis and projecting, staying in touch with each other. And so the language that says that the reservation of sewer will be based upon approved development plans, that ensures that the school won't be built with a sewer allocation until the development is approved. So my suggestion is that we actually establish the reservation at the small area plan, when we're planning and projecting where the school is, how many schools there, what the dwelling units are, the type of dwelling units are, therefore, we can have the students and make a calculation. So instead of approved development plan, I'm just saying approved small area plan. Now, I know Ken's going to want to.
Well, it's not approved development plan for the school.
No.
We're talking about development plans for the, for the residences that are going to be in there.
Correct. And it may be that we plan in a better way, that we build a school before it's absolutely desperately needed. And the sewer allocation, yeah, right, who, what kind of idiot would do that? But so the allocation would be there, so that when the students, when the development did occur, the allocation is there. Yeah, that's it.
I like that vision. Let's plan, let's be prepared.
Yeah. Page fourteen, I am at the last paragraph, just above section four, water supply. And this is where the sewer capacity reserve is released, and in one condition, it is that the school reservation terminates, they no longer want the site, the sewer capacity is put into another bushel and used for other purposes. The other one says the actual sewer capacity for the applicable school is acquired by the BOE from the town or another provider, other than the sewer capacity reserved by CPI. And I would just like to change the sentence to, to, in this way. Where it says is acquired by the BOE from the town or another provider, I'd like to say, instead of other than, I'd like to say that renders the sewer capacity reserved by CPI unnecessary.
Ken's found that paper on that issue.
Okay. Got it? All right. Okay, page seventeen, it's talking about the plant award. And I know we've had this discussion before, and my thinking is that vast majority of the roads have purple pipe in them for future invention. And that in commercial areas, it makes sense to stub to the lots, and you've been doing that. And I'm thinking stub them to the residential lots as well, and your, and your response appropriately is, some of these lots are way too small, they're, they're not going to use the water, they're just not going to do it, there's not enough irrigation there.
That's part of the response, the other response is residential's not allowed to flush toilets yet.
No, no, it'll just be.
So it's kind of a combination.
Watering the yard and the grasses that we committed.
Yeah, we've committed to warm season grasses and drought tolerant plants, and so there's less of a need to water as well, so those are the, I think that was the thinking behind it.
So you, the concept is just to stub to commercial and not to residential at all?
They say not at all, we're just not guaranteeing every one of those lots.
Okay.
I mean, the others, we, we don't have a guarantee of a mountain, we wanted to make sure that the hospitals and the, you know, cooling towers and the software companies and all these, you know, that, that's number one priority for that use, to make sure we have enough of that. So, and so, we don't, we don't necessarily control that, that's why we haven't committed to every residential lot.
Does it make sense to commit to residential lots of some size? Or they're not sufficient?
Well, one of the, you know, one of the things we, again, well, I'll go back to your example of the fire station, we proposed to be answering this in a small area plan, tiny small area plan, as opposed to now for everything, just because of change that will occur in technology and other things we're not aware of, y'all have spoken to about it a lot, yeah, but that, that was some of that thing. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going, I mean, we're, probably, we're running those down through the vinegar, aren't we, the purple pipe, I mean, we're taking them down the main streets of our neighborhoods, it's just that they aren't going down every cul-de-sac, and.
Right.
So they, you know, you could retroactively, you know, the town of Cary, when they started their gray water program, they, they had nothing in the ground, and they went back and retroactively, you know, was installing it, and so you can still do that if that proves to be, you know, as the situation plays out.
Yeah, part of it is I'm trying to get the roads to get not chopped up in the future.
I don't know that they were doing all those, those in the roads, really, what about possibly some of those were the case in the roads, I don't know, I don't know, but yeah, we don't, we don't want to chop up the roads either.
Yeah. And this may be more for staff, but page twenty, Objective One, Item A, says adopt NRPA facility guidelines in order to be consistent with standards employed by other municipalities in the region. Is this additional element telling us, apparently, you're going to adopt these guidelines? And if so, does it make sense for the town to do that?
Can I start with answering then? When we wrote this, if you remember, three long years ago, you hadn't started a recreation master plan, you didn't have these sort of guidelines that at least were adopted that you were following, and so with, as we said at the beginning of this public facilities exercise, we don't, you know, we're, we're trying to help you do some planning that you, you just didn't have the staff to be able to do. Should that, should those kind of things be reworded? Sure, you could, I've learned, I've learned different things tonight, just from your plan, I think we all have. And I think that, since you've now gone through that planning effort, I mean, that could say that some of those, some of those terms are no longer needed.
Yeah. Any thoughts on Paul? I thought Chuck's response was appropriate. So we probably just don't agree with the sentence anymore. Sounds like we don't. Okay. Page twenty-two, is, just got a little bit of qualifying parkland on the very top of it, it talks about addition of section one, five, and four, five, all of the land areas may qualify as parkland for Shannon Park PDD, and as you had mentioned earlier, Chuck, the idea is that the town will approve these items for public parkland, and let's just say, let's say, as approved by the town.
Okay, but I know it says it in other places, if it doesn't say it there.
I think it does, and it's just going to be, this would be a great place for it to say that as well.
We are, we are very aware that nothing we do, we do without your approval.
In our collaboration.
Well, and then your approval.
Okay, well, in fact, David had mentioned this in the presentation about, I'm looking at page twenty-three, and part of the nature of the town parkland to be dedicated, which I think is an excellent section, describe what it is that is suitable, or generally will be determined to be suitable, land. And the usable, usability portion kind of just struck me as, there's a lot of land there that wouldn't necessarily be developable for active recreation, and I'm thinking flood plain. So, you know, I know that if there's a very wide swath of flood plain, and you don't need to mess with surface area as far as raising it, then you're in good shape out in ball fields. If you had to raise it, you would be limited, you would have to go through a lot of.
I don't think we can fill, you know, I don't think we can do that.
No, but you can, it just takes a long time to get a permit to do it.
I don't think we want to do that.
Right.
And I don't think, I don't think we've shown anything, well, I don't know, you're worried about, all the, you know, it may not be us, maybe somebody else, all these different things, we aren't filling in the flood plain with what we proposed, we aren't showing that kind of land.
Right.
That's part of the park acreage.
To have land dedicated to the town in that configuration would limit its usability.
But I, but I will say, I mean, we've looked at, sure, what is it, your town lake park? But I will say, I mean, we've looked at sure, what is it, your town lake park? Most of that, what is it, your drinking supply, drinking water supply lake or a drinking water supply lake of town? But I'm assuming that most of that park is in some kind of flood situation. It's water.
Probably is.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not, I don't think you're saying you can't unilaterally take this out, but you're, I don't, yeah, I guess I'll let you finish.
Well, I'm just thinking that there's a lot of land in here that could not be suitable for active recreation, because typically active recreation, you've got to make improvements to the land for it to be suitable there.
Well, in Chatham County you do. I mean, we've, I've shared this with some of you, I mean, we've run an analysis of the North Village, and we've got approximately two hundred and eighty acres of parkland required. We don't have that much land that's less than five percent slope. And this is all a little, you know, if we took all the snippets and gathered them together, we just can't, and I would say that's true for most of the town, because we've analyzed slopes in the town and in the county. So, I mean, we've added language that deals with that, but-
And I'm supportive, because I agree that it's unrealistic to have that existing ground be five percent. Not in North Carolina, I don't think.
Yeah, so we've put a different standard in there, and you can decide if that, and that, you know, that's drawn almost verbatim from the Chatham Carys, from the way they determine what's, how they want to see land dedicated.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about not too much property and so, active recreation can really never be able to be in that condition. So I'm just, again, I don't-
Yeah, I understand that. But I'd also say too, that, you know, if your goal is for every park to be completely dedicated for active recreation, then we're not going to meet that.
Right.
But I don't think that's your goal. Your existing parks don't do that now.
Correct. Page twenty-four. There's four, which is access, and five, which is infrastructure. And they both speak to the idea of public roadway coverage. Infrastructure gets closer to what I'm after, but the road will be there. Because four provides this, an exception, if you will, that says, so it says access to town parkland used for greenway, that is available for public use shall be at least twenty feet wide. Is that saying that there's a greenway off the roadway, that what will certify as access is a twenty feet easyback to it?
Yeah, we've got some, and this is not the norm, we've been, you know, we've been done about thirty feet and more, particularly when it's part of your system. But we would have connections that are within Chatham Park that could be twenty feet wide when they're, when they're, say, getting from the end of a cul-de-sac down to the greenway trail. And the part of that is just giving flexibility, if everything, for example, had to, the way, we understand the system developing greenways in other places, every linear foot does not have to be, the system has to be A D A accessible. Every linear foot does not have to be, so, you know, I mean, just because you can provide access points, but there are other access points for the special needs community to get on the trail in the area. But there are going to be situations, again, back to steepness and slopes, and you're going to be spending a lot of money on retaining laws and other things and switchbacks and all, just to get something that would meet about eight percent or five percent or less slope. So, you know, we've been saying we will have some situations where we will have, we will build steps, you know, down the hill in those, knowing that there are other accessible entries into the greenway. So that was what that language was hitting at, I believe.
And nothing's important for the parks to have roadway coverage?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And so that takes me to five, where I'd like to add to, well, I'd like to make sure that the language says that the water sewer, reclaiming water, will be stubbed to the property and not left in the road for development of parkland, cut up, really go get those utilities over to services. So I'd like to be stubbed over. I'd like to add to the list, well, one of the things that I want to add reclaim water, because I think parks definitely want to reclaim water. And I would like for the part of the infrastructure to be transit accommodation. I think some of our parks are going to be used by those who will be using the transit.
Tell me a situation where they would not be.
Because you're thinking transit is simply stopping on the roadway.
Or coming into the parking lot in the park, but since you own the property, you've had the ability to put an easement for a stop, or to, if you want a dedicated pull-off to carve that out at some later time when there's actually transit. But I don't know of a situation where, since you control it, that it would only be because you decided you didn't want it.
I guess if it's an M C P F team roadway, it's nice to have an easement dedicated to the town for transit, so that we can take advantage of that with something again, not have to go through a process with them to create it.
The only times I've dealt with it in the past, you know, have been at the time of site plan approval, when you actually knew that the park was there, and then you were, you know, part of the comments of, you know, the provision of those facilities was saying we'd like to see some sort of easement. And I don't know if what you're saying is in this language that we just allow that to happen, but I don't see necessarily the need to be dedicating easements everywhere until we, you know, there's actually a park there.
I think we know that in small area plans.
Well, we do, except you may not, you may say, when you get to the time of development of that area, I mean, we've got some sites that are going to be twenty years from now of small area plans, and you could decide that's not where we want the park.
But wasn't that decision was made, and part of developing a reserve, dedicating park would be putting an easement in place if it were to be, I mean, say, too far in the weeds, or I could see it would be helpful to have that kind of thinking.
I've got the issue.
Okay, I went to page twenty-seven. I think I'm just getting there here. We're talking about establishing fair market value. And we've got a long recipe of how we're going to do that with different appraisers, and a committee formed by three appraisers. And it talks about the value not being less than the lowest or higher than the highest of the two appraisers, or the two appraisals. And I thought it was interesting that there's three appraisals done, and we're talking about the two appraisals, the lowest and highest.
Well, maybe it's not as clear as it needs to be, but I think the system we proposed is that when the plan comes in, developers submit some appraisal. The town has somebody that, or maybe you have a list of people that you pick from. A lot of towns will have three, say, and maybe pick one to evaluate that appraisal, and either tell the town, yes, I agree with that, or no, I don't agree with that, and give you a value. I assume that your appraiser, the town's appraiser, would not say, I don't agree with that, and give you a lower value. So the higher value would come from your appraiser, or the person formed by town. And so, since there's a disagreement, those two people would pick a third appraisal, who would come in with an appraisal, and the parameters would be somewhere in between the two values.
I think the third appraiser does an appraisal, so we've got a third one. And between the three of them, they form a committee.
Well, no.
And they-
Let me see. The third appraiser is supposed to, is supposed to do a separate appraisal.
Right.
Let's see here. I see what you're saying. Okay, we've got three, we've got three values, not two.
Yeah. And then we talked about-
Yeah, let me go back and work on it. That's, I understand what, I understand what your issue is.
Okay.
Let me read that again, I can't, I wouldn't be able to answer it from all of it, but let me read that again, and see if I can make it make more sense.
I know on page twenty-nine, and talking about the improvements on public facilities, and trying to get comfortable with resolution of the idea that the town park architectural review committee won't impose design standards on public facilities that would make those facilities far more expensive or even more expensive than others that would be, while still recognizing the need that Chatham Park wants to provide the land and have those public facilities liked with the community and not, obviously be terribly out of sync with the design. At the same time, you know, the school board is going to be, fire department, police, and parks, you know, really looking, doing as possible, as possible, with public dollars. And I know that Chatham Park will also get really well-designed architecture from the ground, and it could be a conflict with, you know, that goal to be in conflict with expenditure of public dollars would be given the most value out of those dollars as possible.
So how are you doing, town, I haven't really been paying all that much attention to the town in all the conversations. How are you doing that?
Yeah.
Are you doing a lead building on that?
It's very early, talking about, very early.
You're going there, you're talking about, I mean, I'm not sure that's the best expenditures. I understand that it could be, but it may not be. From our experience of having lead certifications.
Yeah, no, and I, and they, you're right, and it's something we have to look at, and something the board has to judge. But this group of people, whoever's sitting in these seats, are making those decisions about, if that's spending the public dollars, I believe they'd be sitting here and we won't in the future based on those decisions. But having the obligation to meet the different standards, where those decisions taken somewhat away from the board, is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I understand the concern, and we'll try to throw something at it, but at the same time, and you've held us to much higher standards, and then when you ask us to not hold you to, and I believe that we should not be holding you to, you know, to, I understand the point, so I mean, I think we can agree with that. So we'll figure out something that maybe gets at it. Mr. Regal's very good at those.
Yes. The other thing that I was asking, I think it's on page twenty-one, has to do with reservations and impervious surface. And I would like to add the language that says that impervious surface reserved shall, impervious surface shall be reserved for public facilities in an amount not less than seventy percent of parcel upon which the facility is to be developed. I think it's going to do two things. It's going to help manage the stormwater item, which is going to be very difficult to state adequacy when we get to the stormwater element. So I think honestly this will smooth things out by saying the small area plan, I mean, that parcel of land is seventy percent.
Something to think about is there could be a number of different ways to handle stormwater to get to that seventy percent. And that could involve having to have additional facilities on-site in order to do that.
Right.
And not knowing necessarily in advance whether that public facility site is going to be part of a regional or not, depending on where you are in the planning process. So I think it's something for us to discuss and think about, but simply saying that's going to do the, that's going to take care of the issue, I'm not sure that it is because of that reason. I, because in fact, you can, you know, you might have a period of ways to deal with seventy percent, and we might assist that you do it, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to max out a seventy percent, we, Chatham Park might look at you and say, well, okay, do it all on-site, you know, which you, which may not be the best way.
But I do think what that does is retain flexibility for them. They can then choose when they start understanding what the stormwater requirements are going to be, okay, we're not going to do seventy percent. We're going to do something less than that.
So strictly looking at the impervious cover, I think that's fine, probably, but I'm not, I'm just not sure about the stormwater. I haven't, I haven't had a chance to review that with Hunter, he's out of town this week, so I don't know for sure about that.
Okay.
But just, I just wanted to mention that, so think about it and discuss it.
No more.
Are there any further questions?
Was that eight? Was that eight? That's right.
Okay. Go over eight.
Further questions? I just have a concern, and I don't know, I'm a little dated, possibly. In page twenty-five, and it's indicated here in this memorandum, number five, where it said, Chuck, if they pay five hundred thousand, basically, it will exempt Chatham Park from any recreation impact fee that may be adopted by the town. So any future impact fee, if you meet that, I don't know if that-
Well, what I'm telling you is that based on the presentation we gave tonight, we exceed any fee you're going to come up with. Lake Forest just went through this study, and they came up with same, same analysis. I know communities are different. Came up with forty-one hundred dollars for single-family units, a fee, and twenty-four hundred dollars for multifamily units. Because multifamily has, again, has more facilities they provide. When we're talking about twelve thousand dollars versus four thousand dollars, I think we've, I think we've exceeded the requirements.
That's why I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, you're thinking about it.
Yeah, I have to think about it. But I just wanted to do that, thank you. Thank you.
Anything further for Chuck?
I had just one or two little things on this fire that we talked about, um, I think it was seven minutes. I believe this should be eight minutes, because that's the N F P seventeen ten standard is eight minutes.
If you, I mean, what we, I think that seven minutes is broken down with a five-minute drive time and a two-minute prep time. And so if you've got some other way you want to describe, we're happy to put whatever response time you want to put in there.
Okay. We do want to put that N F P seventeen ten in there, because that's what our rating is going for.
Where is that, Commissioner Farrell?
Page five, under the first, first paragraph, second, third line.
Okay, and you want to change it to what?
Eight minutes. And then add in the N F P seventeen ten.
N, as in no F P? Where would the N F P seventeen ten be inserted?
That's a citation you can add.
You can just add it with the seven minutes after registration, which consists of five minutes of travel to get, and I think it, and it also allows- I think it, and it also allows one minute for your nominee here.
So it would really be?
Eight minutes.
Three, three minutes for prep, total, three minutes for preparation then? Five, still five minutes for travel?
The seventeen-ten don't break it down like that. They.
We can take out the prep and drive.
All right, and we'll look at it.
Yeah, they don't, they don't break it down like that.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at the regulations, see how it reads.
Another thing that was brought to our attention, and I know we discussed this, Bubba, is the maximum of three fire station sites. We are really concerned that, about that, because there's some wording back in here to identify locations for a new fire station based on national standards and all like that, and then another contradiction. But it's contradicted, and it said, "Chatham Park would help with the numbers of fire." Oh, here it is. Chatham Park, the Fire Department, a sufficient number of locations that maintain a seven minute, which would need to be eight minutes. And I'm just a little concerned that the three sites is definitely not going to be.
Are other developers providing any sites or portions of sites?
Right now, they don't, we have all the equipment and personnel we need for what we have.
I mean, as you grow. I mean, are you going to put a requirement for others to be doing the same thing?
Don't put words in my mouth. I'll just tell you what I.
All we did, and I'll just say, and I, Bubba's going to have the ability to respond to that. We, we took, we looked at the, we've got the data we can show you. We looked at the area municipalities and looked at the number of fire stations they had or kept up, and that's where we came up with that number.
But there, we have talked to several chiefs in this area, and they cannot find anything that says anything regarding these national standards and guidelines for projected service areas created in three square miles and have a density of twenty-seven hundred people per square mile. You can call your chief and carry him, and they have not been able to find that standard in any way.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, because I'm talking, just talking about the number of stations per numbers of residents in those municipalities. And so all, again, all we were doing was taking.
Sometimes you don't get that enough because you have to go by your response time.
Oh, I, I understand. But look, I'll freely admit, you, you've forgotten more about this than I know.
And actually, we have not had a chance, our attorney that was down, our attorney for fire department, may have told you all this. He, he said he had a conflict of interest, interest working with Kirk Bradley in the Mosaic. So he would not look over this with us. So in the meantime, we have asked Mr. Messick, as y'all cleared this, and this has not come back to our board at Fire Department.
Sure.
And we do have quite a few other things to discuss.
But we're, but you're, you and we are waiting for Mr. Messick's responses?
He is supposedly emailing a response out, but it hasn't gotten, you guys ever did it?
No, we have not.
Okay.
First, I would like, maybe if we can get them, hopefully tomorrow we'll hear something from him, and we can get back and get this run through. But I'm just.
What we'll commit to, yeah, what we'll, what we'll commit to is get that information from him and then get with you as we formulate the responses to it, and, and just go and reach one of those with you before the next meeting if we get that before him. I'm assuming we can get it from Mr. Messick this week.
Yeah, I hope so. I will, we actually got a call and email sent to him, but, yeah, I'd like to get something squared away this week.
We'll try to work toward that. I'll, I'll contact.
Thank you.
Chuck, thank you. Is that information?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our agenda with respect to old business. We have no new business scheduled, and so the last item on our agenda would be Commissioner Farrell's. Commissioner Farrell, would you like to start?
I don't really have anything. I'm just guarding the floods and all like that. I think the, I had to be down at the Fire Department that day with, that day we had ten roads that were blocked, impaled, so, not permanently, but, you know, they were, they were sending in traffic in a different direction. So it was just, a lot of water came down in ninety minutes. But then it proceeded very quickly. And Mr. Crease, I think the town staff kind of did a good job in the red zone. Yeah. That's it.
Brian, I have a nagging feeling that I asked this question recently. I don't recall the answer. We had a presentation by the Highway Patrol, or their tower. I think we were going to get, we had an obligation to get them something in a certain manner not so they could coordinate with us to get the SAA system included. And did we, have we gotten information to them? Yeah, it's a great opportunity. Let's, let's not miss our chance to get on that town. That's it.
Senator, the residents, though, we're on Honeysuckle Drive, someone requested attractive common devices, if possible, against one street, someone, which is what, um, three days?
Are you typing speed tips?
Yes.
We tried to call years ago, probably five years ago, we were going to file some, and we're getting that. Part of that policy is trying to determine a rational, you know, dispute case. And also, too, that participants are able to share some of the costs. But I, you know, having said that, we can, we can take the initial look at it, if you have to, to see where, to see from there. But I'm going to be honest with you, it's just, you're going down a slope with that, with that, we've seen it down every street, every local street, asking for a dispute.
Well, perhaps if that's unthinkable, maybe we can post some, some more signs over there or something.
What starts the strategy, I will, I will play it.
Yeah, they, they tell me that there's a lot of speeding going on over there, children, flames, you know, close to the street and everything in their own yard. There's a lot of speeding. I think that's what they're asking. Then also had a request from someone that wanted to know if they own their own private property. Is it possible to just sell vegetables or any type of fruit or anything, say, if I was over down at the fairground? Can I just, do I have to have any type of license or anything to sell vegetables or anything on my own private property?
No, probably just something like produce thing. I'd have to work, but I think it's, it has, yeah, I have to do it.
Okay.
You've got some pictures. I haven't followed some, it's a long process.
Okay, I do. So, and then there's one more thing about the, you know, there's the vapor store over in Pittsburgh. They are in one location, and they want to know, can they move to another location? But I know that that is probably not going to be, that's excluded now.
It is, and we've talked to the owner and the district owner, and explained that overlay district outlawed or excluded certain uses. They were here before, can stay where they are, no problems with that, just relocating to another place. But we can't, but we're not.
All right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to echo Commissioner Farrell's praise on staff's work on the flood. Brian, I appreciate your responsiveness on the inquiry and helping update the board on what was happening as it happened and or shortly after. That, that, I imagine the police were, were on it, right on it, too. I was in another town while I had it, so I didn't witness it. But I also know I've seen folks, the public works, after the fact, working on it. So I really appreciate that. I hope to pass along those words of praise. I do think that that flooding puts, puts a real prominence on the importance of conservation of stormwater. And so we've got both the UDO and the additional element to address that. And I'm wondering if staff have thoughts on, on that as regards to UDO? That's the first two questions.
On storm, on stormwater component of the UDO?
Yeah.
I can tell you, that's probably one of those ordinance that didn't get changed as much as we probably would have liked it in UDO. That was a carryover, and lots of things, there's not lots, there are a number of things that need to be cleaned up as it relates to stormwater. Just more ready for, standpoint, what we can and can't do of the legislature. And we, we need to take a look at that and, and look at a few of the, what we have to do with that. I think some of the things that Hunter and Chatham Park are proposing is good. And more ideas that I've read on this, this dynasty, he was promoting. And I don't see any reason Bubba wouldn't want to continue that, that thought process.
So as regards to the UDO, this event might, might change the priority of revisit of UDO. Perhaps we'll go ahead and pass the UDO and then immediately.
That's right. So there, there will be those.
Set to that long list of.
Of, yeah, right, and maybe it's stormwater versus a lighting ordinance, just for the immediate need. And that'll be what we, what you all sort of got.
And, yeah, that covers it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Right.
Moved by Marcus Pioka, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Does it favor Dave Roder?